A recording has started.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I'd like to call the March 24th, 2025 regular meeting of the Bethel Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. The time is 7:04 PM. And I would love to start with introductions of our commission. Start with the screen. Kevin, that's you.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just switching audio devices. Kevin Seaman, Commissioner. I'll be on video in just a moment.
Thank you so much.
Nicholas George, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Danielle Monroe, Chair.
Pat Perrefort, Alterna.
Dave McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
Also on the screen, Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, I would love to seat Mr. Perrefort for Laura Ferguson.
Only if we have to.
Ow.
Listen, just because I can't be there doesn't mean you get to escape.
That's what I say. I say. Um, Mr. McCallum, sorry, I had a brain glitch for a moment. Do we have any amendments or changes to the agenda this evening?
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair. Yes, we do. There are two of them. Under staff reports, you will, I would ask the commission to consider adding 7 Rockwell Road, York and Moore versus Inland Wetlands Commission of the Town of Bethel DVD-CB24-6050584-S, District of Danbury, and Connecticut EEP Aquaside Permit for 77 Old Hollyville Road.
Can we do that in one?
If you so wish, Madam Chair.
I would entertain a motion to amend our agenda tonight to include the two items just stated by Mr. McCollum.
Second.
Well, that's.
So moved. Second.
He's so moved, I said.
All right, and let's take a vote. Oh, any discussion? Hearing.
No discussion?
No discussion. I'll haul a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Kevin. All right, so we have amended the agenda to include those two items. Thank you. All right, so we will start with site plan review of number 47 Star Lane Construction of an onsite subsurface sewage disposal system, storm water management system, driveway, and regrading activities associated with a new single-family dwelling. Mr. DeVesta is here to share some.
Good evening. My name is Dr. DeVesta, professional engineer, represent the applicant. You've been before. You've seen the site plan before. We made some modifications out of it relative to the comments from staff and Todd Ritchie. I'm gonna sidewalk last Monday, so you're all have fun. That's Monday, Wednesday.
One of those times.
Last week.
Last week sometime. Yeah, sidewalk. So we, um, so you saw the property, saw where the wetlands are, things like that. We discussed where the house is going. It was staked out where the drainage system was going. Settling is outside the upland review area. The walls were shown as well. So I just think just go over, um, the comments. So we get those on the record. I'll start off with staff comments. Yeah.
Yes. No, I'm sorry. You can go on.
So they made a comment about the function and values of the wetlands. It's our professional opinion that I don't think a wetland's violation is needed because we are with outside the up, we're in the upland review area, I think, being protected from the construction sites, from the driveway and from the retaining walls and from the drainage systems. That's up to you guys what you want to do with that. Um, wetlands, but the wetlands pocket will be protected through silk fence, double row silk fence on the south side of the house and the driveway for erosion potentially going into the pocket of wetlands and also will ring the drainage area around it as well. Now would be the limit of disturbance. For the drainage project, we'll go from the catch basin down to the drainage system as well as the drainage system itself. It's, um, they've asked about any kind of drains behind retaining wall. These are going to be loose, loose, uh, loose boulder retaining walls. I saw a rock out there, so we're just gonna use a rock that's on the site. I mean, glass, then use those rocks to create the retaining wall. So they'll be loosely placed. There'll be no drains behind those walls. The regrading, yes, about regrading and using, um, a metal mix on there. Really, the only area, really not really doing much at regrading, you know, within the area, the wetland district area. We're putting the pipe into the drainage system just with a bucket wist, so really just gonna be allowing it to go back to, uh, you know, playing with some erosion control mats or something to protect us, protect it from any erosion and then go back to more an asset area, so it's well away from the house and stuff like that. Um, any kind of disturbance we have with two to one slopes, that will be either the, um, use a hydrosteer or use a, um, a erosion control mat to protect it from erosion until the grass is established out there. Um, placement of environmental sensitive signs. We've had those discussions before on other projects. That would be fine to place around the wetland pocket and along the wetlands if we have to go down below, down the lower portion of the property there. So environmental sensitive signs won't be a problem. Uh, we still have concrete washout area and stock area for construction materials and machinery all outside the upland review area. Um, so if that's we place downgrade at any disturbed areas, we got soap fence shown within line that X is downgraded above. And along the, um, the drainage area. Um, salt will not be used on this driveway. It's fairly flat, so really no need to put any kind of, the deicing materials out besides silk, besides, um, sand on the driveway if needed at all. Um, byproducts from the site from the cutting of trees and brush out there will some will be used on site as mulch and other, I think that not used on site will be removed from the site. Um, as a note on my plan, number 15, this states that that material will be done, taken off site or whatever. Um, they made a comment about the property. I had my report saying the property is all surrounded by residential, residential to the north south, and there's a small portion down the southwest portion of the site is land owned by Land Trust. And which is part of this, part of the property that are the previous client, previous owners, the property gate to Pet Trust. Um, and then the last one was about the, um, about the silk fence and stuff like that. And that, and number 13 describes that the silk fence should be inspected by the town of wetland staff before it's, before it's, before the construction can begin. So that takes, that addresses all of Dave's comments. Todd's comments, um, pretty much a lot of were drainage issues. Um, the town, the copies that were submitted to town were signed and sealed. Um, the existing conditions survey will be, will be submitted to the town once it's completed by the surveyors that will be behind, had some health issues and that, and the, and the help, um, surveyors. Um, note number one, my plan tells where the, on the general notes.
Mm-hmm.
Page three. Page three tells you where the, where the information came from for the Inland Surveyors. So that's where that data came from, my, the existing conditions in this plan. Um, the 10-foot wide E axis or walk, walking axis through the wetlands of a property line that's existing, that's proposed on originally. That was originally part of the approval from subdivision. So it does, we change, we revise it to say existing. Um, Todd was kind of concerned about the water coming down and going across and not being captured into a detention system. So we're proposing a little three, three-inch high burn on the edge of the south side of the driveway. That will collect any water from.
Assholes?
No, no, just dirt, just a little burn, a little grass burn, just a little burn to keep the water from overshooting over that, allowing the water to sheet down, catch bases then down to the detention system itself. Um, there was, the, the, the state came out with a requirement, anything over two to one slope have to designate as a no-mo area or special equipment. A plan with that, with that, the plan saying I think two, one slope can't, should not be mowed. Um, and then, or be placed or, um, have it designated as a no-mo area or special equipment, it's doing like that. But, you know, I don't, I don't know who's gonna force it. You know, that's a thing. So most likely people, anything like that, Steve would go perpendicular versus parallel, and it's kind of common sense, but it's what state's asking us. So it's my plan to state that.
You had mentioned some comments about, um, leaving some of it to return to its natural state.
Yes.
I missed where you.
This area, right, right in here.
Gotcha.
Because that's gonna be, that's what, like within the house, it's a trench to be constructed by a predicative pipe in there. The detention area, it can be also let go in that more natural, so more of a natural area along the south side, south property line there.
And the homeowner or developer is going to do lawn for all the rest?
I would say lawn the area where, wherever disturbed areas. You know, lawn area behind the house. This could be a meadow area here, and this area would be lawn in here.
Okay, but more down towards.
This, this, anything probably below the silk fence will be all left in natural state. It's, as you saw this.
Oh, okay. Got it, got it.
So we're not gonna be going down there, taking trees out and making lawn down there. That'd be more of a natural area.
Thanks for clarifying.
Can I just keep going with that real quick? Is there, is that where the rock ledge is, like where the silk fence is? Going along that, that same border that you were just talking about?
Rock ledge? There's no rock ledge here, no.
When we want the site.
It was, there was rock right here.
Okay.
And that will be removed or lowered down to a point we get to the Alphit Hill. Again, this is, this is a flat, this is made flat on grade. So we're not gonna be excavating that much out. I mean, there may be some rock in a portion of the house, south population right here. So to remove that, but this area here, probably just remove down some of the looser stuff, maybe hammer out some stuff when we have to.
I guess my, my concern was that, what's the finished grade there where, with the lawn area, the disturbed area to be lawned? Is it?
It's flat.
Is it going down? It's flat?
Well, it's.
It's not going down.
It's going down, but not steep, this area here. This is what, natural grade, I mean, the natural grade there is mean what it is. I mean, this is, this dark line right in here is where the grading, that's the proposed grading. Anything with dash lines is existing. That's what it stated, stay existing.
Okay, yeah, I was just, um, thinking that if it's flowing, if it's angled, if there's anything angled toward the well, and that we should do it with like a meadow mix or something. It doesn't get, you know, mowed. It's like, if there's any steep, you know, or.
Not proposing doing any grading in here. So that's gonna let, let the natural state.
I'm trying to picture it from the sidewalk, okay. But you understand my concern about the grading down to that well.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna go down, we're not gonna go down to here now. Now if anything, it'd be some rating, you know, the grading is only this dark line right in here. We're not proposing. Okay, any slopes, the two to one slope, we talked about before, will be hydrosteered or with a, uh, bio, um, erosion control mat would be this area in here and the area below the drainage system as well. Um, Todd asked about a isolation trench rows for the detention system. So the first two rows will be isolated. What that's doing is just they putting the fabric underneath the, the drainage system and, 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 um, allowing the sediment to go in there, so they can clean it out easier. Because usually it's just stone underneath there. So by isolating them, that's where the first, where the, where the first flush is gonna go in there. That's handling all the sediment going in there besides the catch bases. That's some in it, and there's some in the junction box as well. So that's gonna be able to protect it even further. Um, the detention system was, was checked and designed to handle the two-year storm event, reduce it to 50%. Post-development was reduced to two-year, that storm, to reduce it 50% of the previous existing condition. So that's more technical thing that, that they asked us to do. It's more coming now with a new drainage manual for the state.
One more, two percent of the 50s.
It's with the post-development storm event has been reduced to 50% of the pre-development.
Okay, two.
Two, yeah, right.
Is this number, is this number nine you're addressing right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you address the design should include the 100-year storm?
Yes, it did. It's number 10.
Okay.
So storm has been designed, hailing two, 10, 25, and 100 years design storm. Um, and then the calculations were revised to show the correct infiltration. I had, I had missed the picture. Let's put the numbers around. The routing configuration was also revised. Um, the rainfall distribution curve has been revised based on the new manual. Um, the detention, we, we show spot elevations on the corners of the detention system that I'd asked for. And then the calculations for the drainage system, that's a question that you had brought up to Nico. There's this pipe along here from the catch bases detention system has designed for 100-year design storm. So it handles, handles, to the six and five, can handle, can handle flows, calculations were provided.
Yes.
Um, and then we, you know, the comment was about, was not really a planning, I mean, it's more of a planning issue, planning issue versus a wetlands issue, but we are providing, uh, we're, we're, we're saying that the, that, um, fall protection fencing is not warranted on top of the, on top of the retaining walls because they're not that high. Also, they're five feet away from the, um, the, the driveway, and there's also be a four-inch curve around the driveway in this portion here, starting cars will hit it, hit that bump first before it goes towards, towards the wall itself. So, um, that's in my comments as well. And we're, again, providing a curving around the driveway, this portion here to protect any cars from hitting, some places stopped and stuff like that, of course, that's just the wall. So, so that's really the, the comment, the comments addressing Dave's comments and, and Todd's comments. So any questions? Be glad to answer them.
I'm sorry, I'm going to reach. Can I? Um, my concern, thank you for addressing the 100-year storm. Uh, for, uh, storm designer concerns first. Also, the, what I noticed on our sidewalk, um, and we can see, if you guys can get a chance, go back to the, the video from the sidewalk, and you can see that I pointed out this grove of black gum trees, tubular trees, Missilatica is the species, which is what this information um, just kind of summarizes and talks about. And I, they're a rare, um, you know, high-value element to that wetland that's there. Um, and I tend to agree with you also that I don't think it's necessarily due a functional analysis, um, assessment because we visited the site. Um, but, you know, I, I noticed that one, that those gum trees are a high-value piece to that, to that wetland system there, even though they're technically located. Most of them are located, I think, outside of the flag wetland area. So I was wondering what the limit of disturbance is, and you kind of talked about it a little bit for that drainage pipe, and how much clearing you propose to do there. Um, and can we, you know, ostensibly flag, mark those trees and save them to remain?
Yeah, we can mark those. That's no problem. Marking, I mean, I mean, the, the, there's a, that dash line is seeing right through here. That's a 25 foot yard, that's 25 yards setback there.
Okay.
And, you know, we're, the drainage system, the drainage pipe can be, can be moved around a little bit. You can have it go exactly where I'm showing. Could be, right now, I'm showing about 15 feet. Um, 15 feet away, 15, about 15 feet off the property line. And that could be stripped as close as the property line. And that's not an issue with that. And we, that, we get that pipe down, we're closer here, get those further from the wetlands. Right now, right now, that pipe at the closest flag is around 40 feet away. And I don't think those, I don't think those trees are 40, were 40 feet from the.
I didn't, I didn't quite get a chance to measure it. Yeah, it was often smaller than I thought.
Yeah.
I mean, but, but it seemed like there was enough room to do the pipe along. But you have 25 foot. You can't go too close to that one because you have to stay 25 feet away.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying the setback, the setback, this line, I'm just telling this, I'm showing visually. This, this line here is 25 feet from the property line.
So further, but can you not, can you work within that area?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it would be nice if you could push it toward that.
Yeah, and that's where you can do the field, right? So you can see where those trees are.
Yeah.
And we can, we can mark them, and they come out, look at it, and we just tell the contractor, you know, let's make sure we get away from those trees there in the drip line or whatever.
Yeah, if you don't have to clear.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna, and that area is pretty, and that area you probably saw wasn't having a lot, any level of vegetation on anyway.
Yeah.
It's pretty open.
Yeah, and it's, um, yeah. Still, so you said if you don't, the only disturbed area you have to do would be the width of the shovel. But then doesn't it have to, don't you have to fit the machine to, to get it to, because the machine only acts in.
Yeah, maybe use a mini, mini machine or whatever, small six-foot wide. Some, bigger ones are probably eight, 10-foot wide.
So it's not a big, big excavator that you're trying to get in there.
Okay, we can mark them, did come out, look at it, and make any, make a few adjustments.
Think it could be useful. Did you guys want me to, um, I did include in the Google Drive. I know I submitted it late, so nobody had a chance to look at any of this today. But there's a quick, one of the references that I found that was helpful was just the actual Google search AI overview of black gum trees. Can I quickly go through it or?
Sure.
Um, so I just, I just Googled, I Googled Y preserve black gum. Okay. Um, and then it goes through like all the bullet points when you show, go show more. Um, wildlife habitat, black gum trees are a vital food source for various birds, mammals, and other wildlife, both through their fruits and a source of shelter in hollow tree trunks and cavities. Pollinator support, they spring, their spring flowers are an important source of early pollen for pollinators like bees. Floodwater storage, black gum swamps and forests can store significant amounts of floodwater, helping to protect areas downstream from pollution and sedimentation. This seems to be like a key attribute of the, of the tree plant itself, which could, you know, help this in order of attention for the site anyway. Um, soil stabilization, the dense vegetation of black gum forests helps stabilize the soil and slow down surface water, which can improve water quality. Um, that's important to understand. Understory tree. Black gum trees can exist as an understory tree for a long time, which is beneficial for biodiversity. They're a long-lived species. Black gums can live for hundreds of years, providing long-term habitat and resources for wildlife. And then there's aesthetic and economic benefits, ornamental value. They're known for their distinctive fall colors and popular in landscaping, adding beauty in urban rural areas. You know, very bright red, nice leathery fall color. Wood uses, black gum wood has been used for various purposes, whatever. Um, adaptability, they can thrive in diverse soil conditions and environments, versatile choice for various locations, low maintenance. Um, urban conditions, okay. But, um, that was just some of the reasons I thought it was actually a pretty good collection of, uh, first time I ever used AI really to an effective, uh, outcome. And then the, the other links, which you have in the Google Drive, and these handouts that Dave printed out, thank you for doing that, are the more just, uh, testimony, this, the Wikipedia articles, the ID, you know, whatever, go through that. And then this one from the Vernon Black Gum Swamp, city southeast Vermont, you know, just talks about how they found some that are very old. Um, not only among the oldest trees in New England, but they may be the oldest broadleaf deciduous trees anywhere in North America, these eastern black gums that we have. These ones are not that old yet, but it's possible that they're older than the rest of the trees in New York, maybe. Um, if they're passed over for logging for whatever reason, just what wants to happen with these.
They were lost here, were passed over, took all the oats out of that.
Yeah.
Something will be an asset to the property that you're willing to.
Yes.
So it's like.
Trying to preserve them anyway.
For, for, as it gets, as, as things mature, it's just gonna become more and more of a, of a
Asset.
of an asset to the site, I think. Um, so that was just my reasoning, just sort of, you know, and so technicality stuff, yeah, just made a remark on it.
Yep.
And one other question I had was maybe referring to lighting. I mean, you said standard practice and things.
Yeah, it's another plan. We've, we've had this conversation before.
Yeah.
So my plan is saying that the community safety requirements of zoning of the, of building officials and stuff like that, so.
Right, but does, can that include, you know, downlighting and not actually any toward the, basically off the end there into the, the wetlands, like to the west?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem with that.
I don't know if you get.
I don't see the, I don't see highlighting the wetlands anyway. They're not.
The yard is that way.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know why.
Your lighting. Drive, driveway lighting, usually there's a little bright light. There might be some bright light floodlight in front of, you know, at the driveway.
Well, again.
They're gonna need to.
Safety, safety, you know, safety.
Oh, yeah, but there's, but there's different types of lighting.
Well, if we have a lighting on this garage here, I mean, it's gonna shoot this direction here most likely, but it's probably beyond it. Again, I, I can't talk about what they're gonna put out there, but it's gonna be, because the, the building, building codes for safety and, and for, you know, residents there, and there's also probably a timer, so it'll be out.
I was gonna say, most people nowadays with the way electricity rates are trying not to have lights on too long or too much.
But like, it's just the type of lighting, your actual design, so it matters. So if you can have these nice, you know, industrial type lighting, there's that. And that could cover the whole driveway. But there, which a lot of people don't, I don't know if that's allowed. But I know to say. I don't know.
I think that.
Because the lighting.
So the wetlands are pretty far away from where that driveway is. That's gotta be hundreds of feet?
No, it's not that far. You remember where the flag was?
You said that's 25, isn't it?
Yeah, I think exactly.
That is 30 feet?
The rule, right, yeah. Eighty feet from this driveway to this.
Right, but not to where the.
That's about 100.
But the main, the main, I'm thinking about those.
Well, again, this is a high. You're not, you're not.
And they're gonna be on the driveway.
From that back of that garage to here is 160 feet away. So it's quite a, quite a ways away.
Mr. Seaman, do you mind muting your microphone just because your background noise is, is being loud?
Oh, my apologies. I just went to open the front door and grab something I got dropped off. Apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so lighting was my own.
Yeah, I do, I do have a note on my, on the plan.
Awesome. Just changing.
Number 16.
Standard practice for the town building codes.
Right, for, for building codes, correct, so.
Which I, okay, so I need to make sure that those are the right lights for, like, do they specify the actual?
Do you want to see, do you want to see a cut sheet of them? Is that what you're asking?
Of the light?
Yeah. I think that would just.
Well, that's a cut sheet. Of the.
They require extending the application.
What's that?
Would that require extending the application, like extending to another meeting?
We have to anyway.
We have to anyway.
We do.
Well, I don't, I'm again, I don't know what my, I don't know what my clients can do. I'm just saying, I mean, it's something that's in the building, the building department, that and the safety of the, of the residents. It's what they really issue. It's way not a wetlands issue.
But they don't take it and they take the wetlands into account.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't.
I think the wetlands are far enough away from here that they're not gonna be using these huge spotlights out there to, that'll affect that wetland.
And also, that's all gonna be forested, which is gonna break it. But the lights are gonna be aimed at the driveway. They're not gonna be interested in having the lights aimed out into the wilderness. They're gonna want them on the driveway so they can see how not.
You're skeptical. That's a fair assumption to me.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that.
I think what's gonna happen, if, if you sit there and try to delegate which type of lighting they could use this homeowner will put that lighting, and in 10 years, when those lights rust out and whatever, they're just gonna put a different light in there anyway. It's like trying to control.
Yeah.
Eyes are a map.
I think it's a common practice to, to, to just indicate what kind of lighting is.
I think for a commercial environment, yes, but you have whole parking lots and everything. I don't think for residential property, it's gonna be.
Not for residential.
Yeah, residential, you don't.
Well.
We do.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Not just commercial.
I think it's good to request, apologies. I, I don't see any issues with, like, requesting or recommending, mandating. And it might be, be a little difficult for exactly what PATC, like, regulation or something like that is, it's nearly impossible.
That's what plain zoning, zoning codes do. They provide a regulatory framework for construction and building codes.
So.
I'm just coming at it from a wetlands perspective in this specific case, as I am.
And, and I agree with you. I understand that, but then I look at it again.
The wetlands are downhill from the site, correct? That's nice.
So, please, if we wanted to ask you to include a cut sheet for us or to specify which lights you're allowed, to allow us to regulate which lights, we would, um, propose that in a motion, right, Dave?
Really don't know if that can be.
I understood. And, and then we would vote on whether or not we wanted to include that. Is that correct?
Well, doesn't that have to be provided, sorry?
Hold on to that thought.
Yeah.
Hold on to that thought. Table it for now. Remind me when I'm up.
And we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Table lights.
So it sounds to me like you would be in favor of putting some sort of a stipulation on this application in favor of regulating the lights that are on the house.
Or just to see what the design, what the plan design criteria is for the project, so that we know what we're getting into before we make our statement. So if they're planning to use a chill light and have it stay in the driveway, that's great. I'd like to know that. If they're, if not, then we just do whatever.
So I'm not clear on what a cut sheet is either, Mr. DeVesta.
It's specifications like those.
Just, it's just a spec sheet.
That, that describes.
What kind of light, what kind of picture are you using? What kind of, can I like? What, what is your criteria?
I mean.
I mean.
The criteria, not the size, yeah.
No, what I'm asking is, when we do commercial sites, we do a photometrics for commercial parking lots. And we have zero at the property line.
Um, why is that not, that's not.
Luminance at the property line. If you don't want spillage into the, into the neighboring property and the, and have problem neighbor. What is your criteria?
That's what I'm looking for, just that.
You want zero? Or do you want?
Oh, what, what? Values, photometric values.
What do you want? I mean, that, you gotta give us some kind of, you gotta give us some kind of
Yeah.
Guidelines to, what, what do you want?
Zero would be good. Zero is, zero is what we should aim for, right? For, for out, for the lighting that leaves. You don't wanna let anything.
I think.
Oh, no, I am.
We don't want anything.
What do you, I mean, what, what are your concerns?
Uh, just for biodiversity in the, in the woodland there, in the wetland.
For the. Meaning what?
Their photosensitive species.
Such as?
Such as.
I, I want, I want to know too.
Oh, nocturnal, nocturnal.
I want you to, I want you to, yeah, educate me too, so I understand what you're.
Not, nocturnal animals, like flying squirrels, probably, um.
We having it out there, flying squirrels?
There are, there are.
Mr. Jordan.
Like, there's lots of species.
Can, can we put this on pause? Because I would like to weigh comment on this, on this discussion.
And I am, on this note, if we.
Saying that, I know. Well.
Yeah.
Because, because it's, it's bundled in with a bunch of other comments, that's why.
Uh, so I'm not clear. Help me, the, as the chair, to determine how we, what do we want to do? Table this? Table this conversation and then you're going to comment on it later?
Right, right, so.
Dave, why don't you do your comments now?
Cause I'm done.
Oh.
We can do our comments after your.
Oh, actually. Can we pause this conversation for a moment? Kevin, did you have any further questions for Mr. Devesa that you wanted to bring up at this time?
I do not, I am sitting here, I'm listening patiently, but I don't really have much to add to this piece of the conversation. I I have no questions, I've been following on the Google Drive. All of the updated site plans are great, they're very easy to follow along, so it's very easy for me even remotely to see. What, what's going on with, with your changes and what you're proposing, so I I'm okay from my side, I see where. Uh, I see where Nico was trying to go with the conversation, I, I'm just curious about. Specifications and and abilities, so I I have nothing really more to offer on that front.
Beyond that conversation about the lights, do you have any other questions that you would like to?
Zero. Zero, I'm good.
Questions or discussion for Mr. Devesa?
Just to comment, um, this is the last lot on that whole division that we did up there, right, the subdivision there.
There's one other vacant lot, which is not.
Pretty much.
Right, every, every lot is developed.
Right.
Now, just quickly show you, it's not developed.
Of all the lot.
And, um, this, this house here, this spot here is not developed, that's not owned by, right, the original owners of this property, but everything else, anything else is developed.
Yep, and I, I just, the reason I say that is, I think the subdivision was done very well, I think the building was done very well. I think the design of the whole project was excellent. I don't have any concerns over this at all. Nico, thank you for the, um, education on the trees. I I'll be honest with you, when we first started talking trees, I'm like, again, it's wetland, it doesn't pertain to trees, but. We brought up how it's an important part of the wetlands, this type of tree, so thank you.
And that happened to move outside of the land.
Yes, and thank you for working where you're saving the trees. And I'm sure I have a different discussion about the light, but, you know, I just wanted, you know. Recommend everyone that was involved in this, you know, subdivision, like, I mean, we drove up there, it looks incredible up there. I know a neighbor who was over my house this weekend over there, and they can't say anything but great things about it, so.
Okay, I don't have any further.
I agree, thank you for addressing my concerns.
I don't have any further questions for you either, so can I invite you to make comments?
I have a few bits of housekeeping to take care of before we dive into this. Nico, when you were using your phone before, you were using it for the sole purpose of reviewing materials.
I was in fact only using it, I was on the Google Drive research, following one of the topics, and your comments.
Excellent, I just wanted to make sure that was. Oh, it's all good. To speak to Mr. Perifort's comment before. As I was saying to Mr. Devesa before this meeting began, Mr. Ritchie, this commission's consultant, engineering consultant, and myself. Were a bit behind the times last week. He hasn't had a chance to review, uh, Mr. Devesa's response comments, and neither have I, I'm, I'm assuming that. The fair portion of them are substantially addressed, as, as Mr. Devesa mentioned. But I just, I wanna make sure I'm doing my due diligence for the sake of the board and have something in writing to express that effect. And I would assume Mr. Ritchie would want the same. So, one of the reasons why this, uh, site plan review would be continued to the next meeting. For which Mr. Devesa would have to submit, uh, consent to extend to the next meeting on April twenty fourth. Is so that way you have time to hear back from Mr. Ritchie and myself, and. Assuming that there are no other items. Besides, um, hearing back from Mr. Devesa, uh, Mr. Ritchie, that are otherwise outstanding. The commission can give staff direction for, uh, the, this board to have a draft. Of a decision available for the commission at their next meeting, okay, so that, that would be the reasons why we wouldn't close on this tonight. Okay, now to get, now, now that we have the housekeeping up the way. I, I, I don't want between you and Mr. Devesa to have to split hairs on. Whether there's, whether, whether there's flying squirrels or any other creatures that are out there, okay, but this is why. Every time you guys accept an application, I, I understand the fair portion of the lots in this subdivision have already been established. But, but every single lot is different, okay, not every single lot has the wetlands resource. That this lot does, they may not have any at all for that matter, so that's why, that may be why some of them didn't come before you. That, that being said. This is why it's important for every application you guys review, it's important to discuss. What materials you need to review before you render a decision. You guys decided not to have a functions and values report for this, not, not a problem. But without that, you don't have anything determining from an expert per se to say whether or not. A tubular tree has substantive value towards the function of the wetlands, okay? I, i- it's, it's noted that the applicant has the intent to leave those alone, but if for some reason. Those were in the path of any improvement that the applicant wanted to make. The nature of this discussion would be a lot more different, right? The same goes for lighting, okay? The zoning regulations, yes, for all intents and purposes, they only address having zero foot candles at the property line. That's a standard for any application for residential property anywhere. If you guys want to be specific about having zero foot candles effective at the boundary of the wetland itself. Maybe tune the conversation more towards the lighting fixture itself. I, I, I think you would want to focus on the way that the lighting is shielded, if there is any. And which way the fixture is pointed itself, now for floodlights off a garage. It's typical, right, for the purpose of a building code, you're really not thinking about where the light goes, cause you're trying to be safe. Trying to make sure people can get into and from the garage, with their vehicles, without having to be, you know, relying on their headlights. To navigate. I, i- if, if you guys want to make recommendations for fixtures that can facilitate that. And possibly be sensitive towards the wetlands, kind of like what Mr. Seaman was alluding to. If you guys wanna hash that out more, that, that's really at your discretion. Um, but you have to base your discussion on whether or not it's an adverse impacts, direct adverse impact. For the wetland, okay, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that you guys had that out there. A- as for the spec sheet, if you guys refer to the revised site plans that you have before you. I, I think it would be worth your while not to look at any specific details per se. But just look at some of the details that are provided. If you were looking for something more on the lighting itself, just in general, or framing down the road, it may look something similar. To the details that are given later on in the site plans, you know. And I'm not pointing out to any of them in particular, some of them are for the cold packs, some of them for the peptic system. But if, if, if you're looking for guidance on what that may look like. Just the, the nature of what those are. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that, that could be, it's good context for you, just in general, okay? Trying to think of the last thing. That I, oh, yes, okay. Um, Mr. Devesa did, uh, embellish on, um. His response comments to me and to Mr. Ritchie. Um, I'm not trying to. Uh, make a comparative on who's a better artist by any means.
Throwing it down here.
I, I, I will say, these are. The original colorized, um, versions of the site plan that we had on the sidewalk. I took the liberty of doing the same. For the revised site plan. Guys, because context is everything. So far, what you've been, what you've seen tonight is what's new. I think it's worth you guys seeing what was changed and how that, and how that popped out to you. So that way, those, um, those revisions are more distinct, I'm gonna bring them up on the screen, so it's a bit easier to follow.
That's okay, yep, no, I'm logging on the screen and I can also open the old and new site plan side by side here on the computer.
Oh, it's, it's not gonna be a side by side comparison, you're gonna watch how I'm gonna do it, I think you're gonna like. All right, everybody see my screen?
Got it.
Okay, so, um, for all intents and purposes, this is the house out here with the green, these are the wetlands, the red. Is your regular, is the limit of your regulated open review area, so this commission's focus. Is on anything that's between the red and the green, okay? So you're looking at, uh, in this portion here, the stone wall, the grading. And the stormwater management system, those are really your big three items, right? So, what was originally proposed? Now see the changes?
Well, somebody made those lines much darker and heavier.
Okay, well, so, so some of them are darker and heavier, but it, it's, it's worth noting, okay? So, along the retaining wall here, you now have an extra row of silt fence.
Yes.
And, um, there was a change, there isn't a silt section, uh, there isn't a section of silt fence here anymore, okay? Um, there's also no pipe that goes down from the house. Cause you're not capturing water off the house anymore, the water's just coming from the driveway. Okay, so i- i- it, it's just worth noting what the changes are. And how we got here a- a- as part of why Todd and myself made some of the comments that we did. If you guys have questions, is, is for, actually, is this, is having the plans like this before you, is that helpful for you guys?
That's actually, that's a very useful tool in my opinion, I thank you for it.
Trying to read the plans on the drive is impossible for me.
I know.
Because you can't blow them up to a size that's functional. You can't see that stuff.
Yeah, so, if, if, if this is helpful for you guys. Uh, I, I can make a key going forward in the future. And I, and I can do this for every application, I could do my best to have this done.
Sure.
Um, so it's helpful for context, so you guys can do a compare and contrast. I, 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 the reason why I do it, and, and the nuances for this application are pretty subtle, right? Like, you're not, like, there's really no substantive change, apart from a couple of minute things, but it's worth. You know, seeing them on a small scale like this, so that way for much larger projects, it's easier to follow.
So this, this is the new plan with. Revised silt fencing.
That's right, that's right, and it also shows the berm.
The daylight coming down.
Well, no, so, so there's, there was still, look at the plans, Pat.
That is there.
Yes. Fieldstones, flat pad, and that port and drain are there for both plants.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's the, um, it's the roofing drains. That, where that pipe has been eliminated, is that fair to, is that fair, okay? So I, I just, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that.
Can you speak to why the roofing drains were eliminated?
They were, when we did the calculations, we were able to get a zero increase runoff from, without using the roofing area. But also, you gotta think about my watershed. This, this berm right now is stopping the water, and all this water from here coming down. So by doing that, we're collecting a lot more water and off the roof area, so we, we did calculations, and it's up to a hundred year storm, design storm, that. The roof areas did not, you could just go, go to daylight and everything else can be detained down in here, I thought we did that.
So basically, if you don't need to, right. Thank you.
I, I, I really don't have anything else unless you guys have questions for me.
No, I still, I don't have questions about this, but I still have questions, so are you basically saying that there's, at this point in time, without functions and values. We really can't have a lighting discussion?
Well, no, 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 you, you, you can, it's just you don't, you don't have an expert to be. An, an objective resource for whether or not.
It has a direct impact.
Right, right, so you guys can discuss this ad nauseam, I, I think that would be.
What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to table the discussion, because I think that Pat has weighed in on his thoughts, Kevin has weighed in on his thoughts, Nico has weighed in on his thoughts, so I'm trying to. Determine how we, we're, we're not at a consensus on it, so how do we resolve it? No, I understand, but I wanted, I want Nico to be able to have it addressed appropriately. And then discuss this, so would that be, how would that happen?
If you guys want to discuss lighting as part of your decision. Uh, I, I, I would say general is better.
If we were all in agreement, let me ask the question in a different way, if we were all in agreement that we wanted that to be an aspect of this plan. Then that would go into the final thing that you were writing up.
Yeah.
If we were all in agreement that we wanted it there.
It, it would be a condition that with.
Condition, thank you.
You know, with your guidance, it would be crafted as part of the decision.
And how do we determine what all the conditions are that we're going to request via a motion?
So, so what will happen is, um, assuming that there isn't any other discussion tonight.
Which I just asked, and I think everyone was good, Kevin, still good?
I'm still good, I'm fine.
Besides, the lighting conversation's still good, or did you have more you wanted?
No, just, just, just the, the lighting, I didn't want, I didn't think it had to be, you know. A, a big deal, but if it, if it needs to be outlined, then, then so be it. Specific, specified, and I, you know, cause it's, my impression, it would be standard practices to keep the light out of the.
I, I think.
And I think.
I think if you're looking, if you're looking for something like that, you need to let the applicant know. The guideline you're looking for. Like, we could say, we're like that controlled lighting, come back to us with controlled lighting, the applicant can, well, what's controlled? You want zero at the property line, you want zero at the wetland, you want zero at the driveway, I'm just throwing stuff out there. You need to give, I think, a guideline. Parameters.
And, and you have to make sure it's framed from the perspective of.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have to, we also have to substantiate the fact that it would be burdensome if we didn't. I, I don't know if that's the proper way to say it, but, uh, we have to have proof that. Without that stipulation, there would be negative impact on the wetland, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly? Okay. Yes, so, so we, we would need to, we would need justification to make that request. A- 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 and, and prove justification, not speculative justification, correct?
That's, that's right.
All right, that, no, I'm sorry for the redundancy, I just rather be safe to start.
Yeah, um, I, Mr. Devesa mentioned that we had had this conversation before for previous application, and I do recall. Um, you know, having that, and I tried it then. Of litany of materials, or at least numerous sources that, scientific sources, that outlined. Exactly this, that talked about the, the pitfalls of light pollution to a, to a wetland.
Right. Right, but, but that, but that, that, those documents are more of a generalized nature, I, 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 I think. It, it's, I'm sorry?
Informative.
Of course, they, they are informative, but I, I don't, I don't think anyone's questioning the, the validity of, of. What's being described in those reports, it's just a matter of how can you, how can you correlate those? To have a direct effect to what is, to the specific circumstances for this parcel. And, and without having an expert weigh in on that, you don't have that. So.
Well, my experts were my sources, so.
Right, right.
Sources didn't say it must be a zero, um, impact, here's, I, I don't have all the fancy words, but. Luminants have to be this, and the footprint has to be this, or else it does this.
They did talk about a lot of it, yeah.
See, I.
Should I resubmit them for this application?
I don't remember. That we had last time.
Maybe we should.
On Jennifer's way?
I can find some stuff.
What, what you said last time, and they have to be specific to this application, can't be specific.
Yes.
See, they're specific to, to welling species.
Well, well.
Yeah, but it has to be specific to this exact parcel and this exact document and this exact piece that we're looking at right now. The generality of what you propose is a hundred percent accurate, and there's no question about the negative impacts of that. The problem is, is we, we don't have a professional weighed in on this exact parcel of land of the impact of what is proposed. And we didn't request that, so we can't, we can't make a generalized request, however, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, Dave, can we make an ask, like a good faith ask as part of the request that. We put forward for our, our documentation, meaning, I, I, I don't know how to do so, but it's, it's one of those. Hey, can you just, you know, do the right thing, we're able, kind of ask.
Kevin with the trees, for example, where we asked in good faith.
Exactly.
The applicant said, yes, but we need to make a very specific request to say, could you please include in your lighting plan a. And I.
We can make these things conditional.
But here's the thing, so, is example of like lighting that I agree could affect the wetlands, and I won't say. could affect the wetlands, and I won't say the applicant or the address, we had a I'm gonna call it, a row of houses or whatever condos, five, six, whatever it was, like twenty-five feet from the wetlands and proposed with lighting all in the back there. And that, you're twenty-five feet, not even from a huge wetland. Yes, that to me definitely would affect the wetland. And we had requirements in there with like the lighting, could it could not use. This wetland is far enough away that I don't see anyone light. I mean, if there was like a tennis court here or something, okay, but that far away for us to say, okay, use this type of light only, that, that's great. But again, then I get into the enforcement, how do you enforce that? And, you know, I change my floodlight every two years on my house, so how do you change in two years? Dave's not driving to every house going, oh, what's your floodlight look like? You know, how do you really enforce that? So you could make a request to the builder saying, can you be con, you know, um.
Conscientious.
Thank you, conscientious of the lighting in regards to the wetland when you design it with the thing, you know?
Can you be conscientious of the lighting when you finish this construction?
I can talk to the, I can talk to the builder and say, and Pete Sullivan, he builds houses here all the time, you know, and all, and all, I mean, he doesn't put houses up like that. So make a point, we're twenty-four feet above the wetlands here.
Yes.
Houses up here, wetlands are down here. So we've got a big differential elevation. If it's on the same elevation and shining out there, it's a whole different ballgame. Higher like this, I think your, 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 your luminance are going to be a lot less down here than they would be if they were on the same plane.
My concern was it was just that, that they're lower, so the light, you know, could, will go shine down like on them, like if it's.
Which will be broken by the trees and the other, because that's going to be undeveloped. But if I can get back to what my question was that I still didn't get answered, how would we put a condition in there? I think we can close this conversation if I can get an answer to that.
Okay, well, before we go down that path, why don't we have a consensus for which way this commission is?
Sure, so if I can feel the room, are, among our commissioners, all of them, are we feeling like we want to put a condition in this plan for approval that includes the lighting?
Well, well, let's, let's, let's get to a consensus first before we go into the conditions. Do we, are we?
Of approval?
Or? Or deny?
Or to, right, okay, sure, we can do that, sure.
I have more general comment about, about this.
Okay. Yep.
Um, oh, just that we've had this conversation before, so it's questioned, like, I'm actually raising the same questions about lighting. What does that indicate for the process? You know, basically what I'm looking for is a photometric plan that shows, if I can have this question, then I don't have to ask them. It's like, oh.
So I feel like the answer to your question is, is that we're looking into our regulations?
We don't require this.
We do not require a photometric design.
Required.
So I feel like that's a common, and so my answer to your question, I believe, is that if that's something that you want us to include in revising our regulations, then that's right, but that.
For you, but it may get easier for the app.
Yeah, but I have a question, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
You're regulating, you have a hundred foot regulated area. So if we're outside a hundred foot regulated, regulated area, how is that gonna, how, how do we?
It just has to do with the light pollution into that area, not.
Into the wetlands? So you're saying, you're saying, my what, this is my open review area here, wetlands are down here. So you want to know what the regulate, you know, what the light pollution or whatever.
Travels towards the level, yeah.
But what, what, but where? If, if we're outside. View area.
Where does the light go? Cause you can read where, how, what the illumination is on the site, right? So those, those.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that a hundred foot open view area, that outside, outside, outside by your privy.
We can't control, just. He's saying you can't control the light outside the area, you're saying, you don't care, whatever, into the area.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But that's, that's, that's how light works. Light just goes wherever it's pointed.
Hang on.
Shadow, shadow.
Hang on.
So that's not against our. I'm not, I'm just trying to get that information.
This is why.
What are you guys laughing about?
This is why, this is why it's very important. When you guys accept an application, you guys discuss this stuff upfront. So that way, these kinds of questions don't get risen during the site plan review. We're gonna walk in our second meeting to discuss.
This is the site plan.
I, I, I know, I, I, I understand.
It's need that lighting to be addressed in any construction.
Right.
Residential, industrial commercial, which is standard for industrial and commercial.
Right.
But so.
Mr. Jordan, if I.
What's the difference with residential? There is none.
Isn't there? Mr. Jordan, if, if I may, I'm sorry, um. When you guys accept an application, you're reviewing it for making sure it's complete, that you have everything in a generalized sense as to what you're looking for, but this is where you have to kind of look through actually what's being given to you, and if there's a, if there's a recurring question that you have had just in general that wouldn't otherwise be addressed as a requirement of the regulations. When you accept the application, that's your time to raise it. It's no different than the functions or values report, you know? It, the more upfront you are, the more conducive the discussion is going forward as the site plan review progresses, okay? If you guys want to talk about possibly adding lighting as an element to your regulations, that's the discussion for another time. You know, I, I, I wouldn't want to make it a, a, a linchpin for, for this application.
No, if that's the proper way to go about it, then, then that's, that's fine.
Right, okay.
I, I'm not, I don't think this is funny at all.
Right.
I, I just. What, do you? I mean, it's, nobody's ever mentioned lighting you in the history of your work.
If you're planning a zoning or subdivision regulations, yes.
Forgive me, I, I, unless you're gonna introduce yourself to comments. We really can't be having conversations out there without going through the formal process. That's why I'm restricting that. So if I can keep the, the conversation here and, and to what we are doing, that's why I'm trying to get to the process. So the process would be, so let me get back to where we're at. I would like to feel the room freeze and get a consensus for whether we are feeling like we are looking to approve or deny this application. Kevin, can I get you your way in on, on which way you're leaning here on this application?
I'm absolutely fine with uh approving this. I thought that they did a very stand-up job.
So leaning towards approval, Nico?
I, I want to approve this application very much.
Towards approval, okay.
There was just a couple of these concerns.
Okay, leaning towards approval, leaning towards approval as well.
Okay, so that's one more comment.
Sure.
Based on that, based on our application I had before, before you this commission on Jennifer's way, we had discussions about this whole thing, and I put a general note on my plan stating what about lighting. And that was acceptable to you at that time.
Mm-hmm.
That exact same standard note on my plan under, I hear site plan notes there. So now you want something different now. That's why I kept it this, I kept it the same thing, cause you approved it last time that way. I'm doing the same thing here, so now I'm not sure.
Well, it's not clear to me that I approved it. I have to go back in my records and actually see.
The note is number, it's the very last sixteen, sixteen.
Outside lighting on the house will be, it's standard of practice and read the building code for safety.
But like you said, every site is specific. You have just of this few minutes.
And I think you did approve, I think, I think it was unanimous approval for that, for that.
I'm not sure if it was unanimous.
I, I believe it had to be because we only had three members at that meeting.
Well, then I'm, Dave's on an issue that I shouldn't get it on.
Okay.
And I plan on doing it again or anytime in the future.
I just think, so I.
It's addressed, the issue is addressed.
So let, so let me, let me just offer to try to keep the conversation moving. You all have indicated a consensus for approval, okay? Barring any uh boilerplate comments that you guys would otherwise see as part of a revolution or any other comments that Mr. Ritchie would recommend this commission include, um, you know, pursuant to the response comments he gives. One of them is, one of your comments would be about lighting, right? So let's just, let's just go right into that one right away. Um, if you guys want to offer a generalized comment about recommending lighting to either have shielding or be directed away from the wetlands if they're, if they are presumably even strong enough where their foot candles would get to the edge of the wetland itself, i.e. a floodlight. That's really the only one I could think of off the top of my head, okay? Then, then, then you can certainly have generalized language in there making recommendations for that.
Just only illuminate the, the base surface.
Right, right. I, I think the, the, the more specific you get, the more restrictive the conversation becomes about why you're doing this and why it has to be this way. So I think generalized comments, it, it gives me a better foothold when I go out there to do the zoning compliance inspection. You know, I'm gonna take a look at the site and the house, not just the inside, but the outside to make sure that what's what is actually what is.
You go at night.
That's, that, my, 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 my next question is.
Uh, right.
At night, you should go at night.
Well.
You should.
It.
Absolutely, you should go at night.
Right. I, 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 I'm, I am.
But then you can't see everything else.
I am unfortunately limited. I'm unfortunately limited by the hours that I conduct business here. So for the, for this time of year, when there being more light outside longer, I would have to stay beyond my hours, you know, to, to possibly see the site at night. Now in winter time, four o'clock, that may be a little bit more. But I, but I don't want to have in, and certainly, um, oh, good grief, Mr. Sullivan.
Right.
Doesn't want me to have to wait until November or whatever month it is.
Right.
For, for it to be dark enough to coincide with when I'm in the office, okay?
I make a suggestion. Obviously Nico, the light, and lighting is important, don't get me wrong. I don't think it's gonna affect the, this, the way this is laid out. Like, you're not worried about light up here, you're worried about light down here. I'm not.
And like, or whatever, like off, yeah.
Yeah, I'm definitely not worried about light over here. You light up over here, your neighbors are gonna be calling, so I'm not. But here's my suggestion, just make a recommendation or request of the applicant taking consideration to wetlands when designing their lighting path. In future, whenever we get an application, we will look for, and I forgive what they call a lighting.
It's a photometric plan.
The one with all the numbers.
That's correct, that is a photometric.
For future, cause that way it's in the plan that you could, cause I'm going by right now when I believe from construction that would affect. Right, exactly. So with that type of panel in the future, you'll have that, we'll all have that information. But for this one, I believe, first, I believe it's far enough away. I know you don't, but I believe it's far enough away. We could request the applicant to just take that in consideration when designing.
If it's something that you care about as a commission, I want to do.
No, no, and I, 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 I do care about it and I agree with that. I just don't see it being a concern. Like if this wetland was like right here, oh, absolutely, but it's down below, okay? I don't think you're gonna have the light hitting here at all. So to me, that's why I'm not concerned about it. You obviously feel different about it, but just, I think in future. Yep, we have no information to enforce that to the applicant right now. So I think in future plans, we'll make sure that every future plan has that.
Photometric.
I think we should probably, no, I think this is a conversation for a regulation discussion as opposed to with this application.
Yes.
Um, so I would, I would like us to find an endpoint on the conversation for tonight.
I think it's a great plan, but I didn't want to have to ask.
I understand, but when you're talking about a larger thing, and that's a fine conversation for us to have, right, so.
Do anything out of.
I, 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 exactly what we did last time.
Understood, right. So if we can try to.
And that's what I've been doing with Dave's comments too. He's asking his comments, and he's, he's seen my plans, I keep adding stuff onto it if I know what he's gonna ask.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, I think these are great plans for the record. I, I think, you know, for whatever that's worth, I think they're, they're some they're a great design. I just wanted to help perfect it for, from the point of view of the little ones as well.
So.
With Andrew and the site.
Okay, so moving to.
To work with you, I'm kind of rather.
Yeah.
So moving to try and end this conversation so we can move forward with the night. I believe that the conversation that you want to have has more to do with our modifying our regulations. So let's, let's, if it's okay with you, table that conversation for that part of the discussion. Um, and get back to what we were about to do, which is discuss whether or not we want to put in some sort of a request.
Recommendation.
Recommendation stipulate, not stipulation.
It's condition.
Condition, thank you for the word again.
You're welcome.
Um, so is that a, shall we feel the room and see if we feel like we want to put a condition?
It's the commission's discretion.
Okay, so I'm gonna be the commission's discretionary. Do you, I'm gonna start on this then. Do you feel like you want to put a condition in this plan?
Request is fine, that condition.
Okay, uh, do you feel like you want to put a condition or, or request one or the other into this plan for this application?
Let.
Whether the right vehicle is to convey the information to try to keep the lighting to the, the.
So, so it would be a condition, but it would be in the form of a recommendation.
Okay, so a condition is the formal term for it, but in the form of a recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So are you leaning towards wanting to include that in our conditions?
Sure, if we have to, yes, yes.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Yes. Kevin, are you leaning towards wanting to include that condition?
Sorry, talking on mute. Sorry, that was my bad. I'm completely indifferent, so I, I'll abstain.
Okay, um, I would leave with Pat and say that I'm not in favor of including that condition. Or did you say yes or no?
I, I, I don't know if it's condition or recommendation, so I would say no.
Okay, so I would say no, so that we have one abstention and we have.
Two out of four, it's not enough. So that, so that would be, that would drop, that would be.
With one out of four in favor.
Right.
Right, so.
You would need, you would need, you would need three.
Okay.
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 So, so the other thing that I would, or the, the other thing that I would say you should consider is, as Mr. Dibes was saying, way back at the beginning of this conversation, the medallions.
Yes.
Okay, you should discuss how many you want, where you want them to be placed, and how you want them to be placed.
And if we want them to be placed.
Sure, right.
Okay. So, opening that conversation.
Five.
Okay, just because that's how many fingers you have on your right hand?
No, it's a good number, I guess. One, two, three, four, five. There you go.
Okay, so.
I would just put one in the black.
Hold on one second, we'll get to you in a moment. So you, you would like to put them?
I, I think it'd be up to the applicant to uh space them enough that identifies wetland area to people on the property.
We probably.
Cause it's based on what trees, I mean, if you have one tree, one tree, but if you have a hundred trees, five is enough, you know?
Well, we're, we're trying to identify the wet, if we're putting them, we're trying to i- identify the wetlands area, not a tree.
Right, where you're gonna put them though.
Nice, so you're on the stake.
Yes.
No. No stakes, I'm not gonna make this dude with stakes have his property.
I, I, you know what, I can leave that up to the discretion of the applicant and our wetland agent to correctly identify the wetland using the medallia.
Well, I don't think that Dave is willing to go out there and decide where they need to be. I think that's.
Okay, five.
Well, in previous conversations about this, we have made, I don't remember what the numbers were, but stipulations such as they will be placed every fifty feet or, or thereabouts as appropriate.
Okay.
Was that what it was? Was it fifty feet?
Fifty, a hundred, depending on the site, the number varies.
Okay, so then that's sort of a, a metric that we've used in the past.
Every fifty feet is fine with me.
Every fifty feet, you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, thanks. I, I think it would be sufficient, in my opinion, to put, um, either on a post. And we're, I think it would be fine to put on one of the black on trees just to signify that that's actually the growth, you know, in question. Like, I think those three here, I also picked one tree there.
But we're not identifying the trees, we're identifying the.
The wetland area, yeah, so it would be right there.
And on here.
Just all clip.
He's had in the other applications, the boilerplate.
And you'd be looking at the wetland, so by reading that sign, you're facing and walking.
If, if you're offering specific locations, that's fine.
Yeah, wetland flat.
What, what I. What I would say is. About, about building this conversation to death beyond what it already is.
Maybe one here on a little tree. Are there still gonna be trees past the silt fence? Yeah, so just pick maybe a tree down here to signify, signify that this is a, that this is.
Hang on, where, where are you pointing?
That'll cover. Oh, I'm pointing at, um, the junction of the intermittent water course from the pocket.
Like fifteen.
Oh, yeah, thanks. You know, somewhere in the vicinity on this hill, just so that if they're walking.
We've had medallions on the applicants. Do you remove holes?
Uh-huh.
Maybe you read one of those. We make it like a boilerplate, so.
You want them on the wetlands flags, or you want them, you want them at the wetlands?
As you're approaching, I would say like in the open review area, like here on three, so that you're like.
But just outside the. Previous applications, these have been placed, medallions have been placed to signify to anyone that might be walking through that area, that they are entering a wetlands area to be mindful of that.
But at the wetlands?
Yes.
At the wetland, but he's, he's talking about outside the wetland.
Correct.
So correct.
And the border.
We're having the conversation.
On the border, on the, on the south.
Here, here, may I offer a recommend?
Yes.
Whether or not it's. Whether or not it's on the wetland or with it, or not in the wetland, I think the words that you're looking for are within. A certain feet of, a certain point, okay? So if, if, if you're talking about having a medallion within, within the vicinity of. The water course flag number fifteen, as is shown here on the plans.
I don't wanna start getting.
You, you don't wanna get specific?
No, they know what a wetland's. We've done this on other application. What's a boilerplate? We use that on the applications.
Uh, sometimes you've, you've placed them right at the edge of the limit of disturbance. In, in which case you would be following, you would be following the soap fence.
Somewhere around there, maybe a little further in, but like somewhere nearby a tree. And then like one here as you're touching this one.
I, I would say. Intervals of around fifty feet. On the boundary of the wetlands.
I think that's.
I second, I second Pat's idea and I would also like to state, sorry that I'm chiming in, but I might as well just put my two cents in. Uh, exact same as Pat, and I'd also like to stipulate that around fifty feet on already existing. Uh, growth or already existing trees. I don't wanna make this gentleman put stakes in his ground. Like, I think that's just, I'd be pissed if somebody made me do that on my property, um. So, that, that's my take. So Pat, I'm with you, uh, same thing, existing trees.
Yep.
I don't do that.
Yep.
I just, I can't help but think that it's, you know, high hypocritical or uh. You know, to, we're trying to like save the wetlands, but here we are putting all these like plastic placards or whatever they're made of, like on the trees, you know, it's a little.
Not in the wetlands, outside the wetlands.
I know.
They're, they're metal if it's any consolation.
I just think we should limit the number of them and put them in like very strategic and important spots. Maybe one or two on a site is probably okay. They're there, the property is gonna see.
All right.
That's, that's fine, except that the wetlands extend all through here, so one or two of them is going to not really.
Yeah, maybe three.
I think a point that this wetland is down here, very much. I, I think you're con, you're mostly concerned about what is here. This one is down here, I mean.
I was mostly concerned, yeah, with the part you're talking.
They aren't even going down here.
But.
Wetlands are here.
I would be down there, I should be down.
So maybe.
Okay, for Salamanders.
Maybe, maybe, maybe one over here east of wetland flag fifty-two, maybe one here at the junction of the tree and maybe one. I, I do think we should put one by the two of those, but. Um, by that pocket.
All right, by those three wetland flags.
All right. Can you read, can you read those again? Can you read us me again, Nico?
How about, um, you know, one, one inch equals thirty feet, uh, you know, thirty feet in from. Two. Um. Thirty feet in from the wetland flag forty, what is this? Or forty-one, or what is it, fourteen?
What's the one about forty?
It's, they're, they're, they're the same thing. It's, it's a water course slash.
So just like, um.
At forty?
Forty. At forty, and then uh. One of the black puro trees just outside the well.
One seventy-nine.
One eighty, one, one eighty-one.
Or one seventy-nine if you want.
One seventy-nine, I think fulfills this commission's purpose, but.
Yes.
Forty and one seventy-nine.
Okay. Kevin, are you good with that?
I am good with that. Sorry, I was like, I just put my. I'm a bad habit of putting it back on mute, just like I'm at work.
Do you guys have any other specific conditions that we would otherwise have not already covered?
No.
Nico?
Um, no, just reluctant to make the lighting.
Kevin?
Got nothing.
Nor do I.
Okay, so. Staff, staff will have a draft resolution of approval available for the commission's review. They're in their next regular hearing on April twenty-eighth.
Do we need to request the extension?
Yes.
Twenty-eight?
Yes, it's the twenty-eight, yes.
I won't be here. On twenty-eight April.
Okay.
If you, you need me.
Does, I don't have any.
The reason why you would be here is, is to offer or, or, or to look at the. Is to. Of course, of course, but, but if you, if you wanted to watch the commission discuss it in real time. That would be the only reason.
I could, I have to do that where I will be.
Okay, cause, cause you can always time in remotely. I, I would hate to take you away from wherever you are.
If there's any major issues, but yeah, I think you would know beforehand.
Yeah, I think so too, okay.
And can you give me an extension letter for this, for tomorrow? To get us to that next meeting?
Thank you.
Anything else?
None for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mister Dvesta. So. Moving along to our next item on the agenda, that would be one seventeen Chestnut Ridge Road. Re-subdivide the property into two residential lots with a new driveway and a wetland cropping. New lot to be served by underground utilities, private well and private septic. Okay, and it was typically here to present for us.
Before we get into this, can everybody pass me the stuff for, um, before it's done, stop.
Should I introduce yourself? I'm sorry, we got papers rustling and I did not, we're good. Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you.
Representing client for this property.
So prior to tonight, two years ago, we had a new application in, in this. And this first plate is a introduction of that prior. A boob subdivision plan. Uh, that plan had driveway, a new driveway, a new lot in the back. Crossing the wetlands here, in the culvert, and then part of that driveway is gonna be on the abutting property owner's. Pl- um, property with an agreement between the client, the applicant and that property owner to do this grading and construction work. And on his, on, as, as an easement for the property. Since then, uh, is lapsed in an application because he did not follow the site. Subdivision plan. And he has not reached an agreement to do that work. So we have gone back. We submitted a new plan. And. We are going back with the alternate plan we had under the first. subdivision. So what, here's the stream again, that will cross it, but now we're crossing twenty-four, so the culvert of the same size as we had before. With a driveway now crossing this way. It all has been shifted over, including the house, so that there is no grading on the abutting property. That's the main focus of this application. We do, still, we still have the rain garden as we had before in prior application. Um, we will be reconstructing, there's a swale here. That drains from this property onto ours. We're going to reconstruct that to the toll bar slope, so it still functions. To bring any runoff through here back into that stream channel. Other than that, I believe this septic system that was forced through this house here and has already been built. Under construction, the esbelts, we've included those on this plan. We do have a proposed septic system for this house here. Upstream of upgrading of our rain garden, upgrading of this caught into the uh. Hillside. Uh, we do have erosion controls with the, we're using a straw wattle. For the um upstream side to prevent wires from collecting through the site. And then we have soap fence on the downstream managed to collect soap before it enters into the wetlands with. Uh, more of the soap fence and. A uh, to construct this culvert, we're gonna do a little diversion here just to bring that around. And then we can restore it back to its place. Yes, if there's any questions, I'd be free to entertain. I, we have not received any new comments.
That is, that is correct. Again, I apologize. I'm happy to just on the record, I'm behind the times. I have meant to get back out to you to say, hey, I, cause I know I had given you a date on when I planned to have my comments to you. And that day's well past. Um, so I apologize for that. That being said. This is, um, for lack of better words. The, the. The premise for this subdivision, the, the, um. Amenities in the house and the driveway, well, the houses did, it's the same, but, but the driveways relocated, that's, that's the only substantive thing of note. There is still going to be a, a wetlands crossing for the driveway. And, you know, th- there is still going to be a, a driveway that, that goes up to get to the rest of the property. I. If, if I do have any comments, they, they won't be, um. Substantive in, in, in any way, or they won't offer anything new per se. What I would uh say is, um, we already went through this application, the commission approved this, I think it was back in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, so most of my comments will probably mirror those. I'll have those in for the record for the next meeting. Um, the one thing this commission should consider is the drainage swale. As uh Scott has mentioned, okay? You're, you're, you're going to want to confirm or have something that affirms that that is in fact just a drainage swale. And isn't anything else, okay? Cause we, we didn't get anything on that during the last application because all the activity was away from that. Now that that is within the envelope of the activity that's gonna take place in this property. It's just, it, that might be something that you wanna consider whether or not that needs to get hashed out. If, if, if you feel as though. You know, he's presenting it as a drainage swale and that's all it is.
What else could it be? Well, it does have a, a name for this brook.
No, 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 I, I'm not talking about.
You're talking about the swale from.
That's going downhill.
Oh, this one here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just a little ditch, basically.
Okay.
Grass line.
And, and.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Like to see it detailed.
I'm just reconstructing it basically at the toll my slope, so it still functions for him as well.
Right.
Yeah.
You're keeping it off your driveway directing the water as it is now.
Yeah, he should really have an easement on my, on this property to do that work, but. We're not gonna hash, it's old, we're not gonna, well, I'd just rather keep it and reconstruct it for his use too, so.
Okay.
It's a little detail on it.
A- as, as long as it doesn't exhibit any of the characteristics that would otherwise make it considered as an intermittent water course.
Well, I see what you're saying, because it's already existing.
Right, right, okay, um. You know, this, this, the, the, the drainage swale, it may only see water once in a blue moon. Like those freak storms that we had last year in January and August. It may have periods of flow, a- and, and that's fine. It, it's just a matter of whether or not it exhibits all of the characteristics at the same time. So persistent flow, evidence of scour and plowess and high vegetation vegetation.
Soil scientist to assess that?
Well, i- i- you don't need a soil scientist, but uh, i- if, if it's not, if most. If some of those things are readily obvious, like if I'm going up to that drainage swale and I'm seeing algae. Or I'm seeing spots where material is getting deposited because, you know, there's flow there.
So you could determine that on the visit.
I could, right.
But did, uh, did the original wetlands report we submitted, we didn't refer to that at all?
It did not.
No.
Well, take a look at it.
He may have looked at that and said, it's just not.
I would hope so, but it wasn't embellished in his report. So it's, it's hard to say. So I, that's, that's just the one thing that I would. Recommend this commission. If, if, if you want me to go up there and take a look at that, I, I'd be happy to. Um, is there anything that you guys see of notes? Um, that would, that you would want to discuss?
A little more information on the crossing of the water course.
Okay.
Like, like the, the process of the how it will be done and how you control the sediment. While you're working on it, not from wash downstream.
I wish I brought the detail sheet for me.
Uh, next time's fine.
Dave can probably bring it up. It's on Google Drive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is the detail sheet part of the longer document on the Google Drive I'm looking at right now?
I will bring that up right now.
Yep, yep, so I'm, I'm looking through them uh as we speak as well.
Basically what you do is you dam it, then upstream it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then you put a pump in.
Yep.
And demwater it.
Yep.
You bring that line back around outside your airport near.
Okay.
After you dried out the area and properly graded it, you're gonna bring in the culvert.
Okay.
It's the same size culvert as I had before, but not having any stone on the bottom.
Okay.
It's just wanting to increase different flow.
Okay.
Because I looked at all the culverts upstream. And the town has no design characteristics that'd be those culverts ever installed.
Okay.
I ran a rating curve for all the existing culverts and came up with a curve. For this culvert to be based on that curve.
Okay.
Normally. Any new culverts have to meet a fifty or a hundred year storm.
Ah, that's right.
But. Because nothing upstream can handle that, that they can handle a two-year storm. I have to size this one to pass what they can pass. Basically, what's gonna happen is.
Why did you set it to pass a hundred year storm?
Because you're not gonna be, any storm, we asked the two-year storm, it's gonna be in the street. It's not gonna be in the channel. It's this channel will blow out. Because none of the culverts are big enough to pass.
What is, what is the hardship of putting that in a hundred year storm versus?
Elevation wise, I, it'd be much bigger, it would be a lot more. Bigger to do that. And like I'm saying, even if this was a hundred year, you're not gonna get that through because this one and the one upstream. Are gonna force water down the road.
That may be, however, in the future, when those.
Comes back. Yeah, they come, town comes back and fixes his other one.
From before as opposed to ready to handle the storm water management from.
Like a catch.
Right.
Right, so what am I gonna do? Do, do you want to go back and, that's also a very big pipe. This one's already. Um. Trying to read my wording.
I would, I'm, I agree with this.
This is already seven. Seven feet high, seventy-one inches wide. So you're already talking this culvert this high.
And that's only rated for a two-year storm?
No, it's rated for the flow that can go through these, which is about ninety to a hundred and twenty CFS. Which is roughly around a two-year storm, maybe a little bit le- less than that. Whatever's coming down the story, this whole channel, even if you put the right culvert in, up and down the channel. The channel itself can't handle more than a one or two-year storm.
Is this being reviewed by the engineer? It is not, because they're not proposing any, um, they're not proposing any substantive changes. Apart from the different location to what was being done before, if, if, if you guys. Want.
Are the new regs two hundred year or is that not applied to this?
Yeah, I've talked about this with Mister Ritchie on the same issue, and we've both come to the agreement that you can't be the channel what it is. If, if you have.
Hot.
Hot, yeah.
Okay.
With uh SLR. Being the channel of what it is, where it's only capacity in the channel. Let's say you had.
Okay, all right.
It's just cause I, okay, I could put a big structure in, but I can't get the water down the channel itself.
So another, let me rephrase this then.
Yeah.
Is that sized appropriately in for, if that channel was a hundred percent at capacity?
It would probably take roughly about, you know, the two-year storm, which is all your channel and your upstream culvert's gonna take right now. It's size of, anything that goes past these other culverts here, will pass this one through.
Not worry about the other culverts, I'm worried about the, the. Channel itself.
Can only take about one or two-year storm.
And that's what that size to me, because anything over that is outside the channel anyway.
Right.
Okay.
But is there a problem with building it bigger so that it can then pass that water smoother? So let's say that water is out flooding and it floods the whole wetland area there, or it oversteps the banks and everything, it flows the banks. Um, to the, by the existing driveway to the south. And that whole, that whole lawn area is all gonna get flooded, right? And then shouldn't, should we or should we not design that, that culvert so that? So that it can pass?
Yeah, when, whenever you got your finisher of that discussion, I had the detail sheet.
Mine is Nico Jordan.
Oh, can you go through that question maybe?
Yeah, um. To, so if it floods in the event of the, of a great storm, what we've seen recently and like we'll probably see again. Then will it? You know, should, should it be designed to pass that water from that area to evacuate it? Or should we, or is it gonna be underbuilt so that that water just stays? Or should we, or is it gonna be underbuilt so that that water just stays flooded and in place that it is? I'm, I'm thinking we should design it so that it can carry the water away.
I understand what you're saying and I agree. Now the spin on this I have. If you got fifty gallons in the, in the channel. This could hold two hundred gallons, let's say, and then you have fifty gallons afterwards again, what does that bigger opening do? You understand what I'm saying? I like a bigger opening. You know, but what, but are we over killing it when the stream itself can't hold that? Like, why are you making?
What does it mean for a stream to not be able to hold it? It means. But it's still in that depressional area that just broadens its, broadens it, the river gets bigger.
The, the stream has a certain cha- a certain shape for it, right?
Right.
More trap is oil. The higher, the, actually, the only the one year storm, you're gonna get up to filling that stream bed and then you'll go. You're gonna be looking more like that picture. That's the stream, the original stream, that's the overflow.
And that's when you're gonna be begging to have a bigger opening there so it can.
What I'm saying is, if you look at every culvert above you, none of them can do that.
Yeah, I know, but that's, but that's a mistake with the path that we can't.
I know, and I wish I could say, yeah, I'd like to go back and revisit that, but I have to have the town go back and revisit that situation.
Well, they'll be like, like, um.
Now, if they, if they've gone through, if they went through and said, we're gonna reconstruct all of these up, upstream view. To that pond, there's a pond over here off this picture, Matt, that they all feed, that feeds all of that. If you guys, if they went through and said, we're gonna.
That may happen. The property owners may do it themselves.
They may or may not, that's, I know, that's kind of hard to enforce that unless you're gonna come back and say, okay, we'll, yeah, watch you guys all. I can't make them do that.
Well, I just think you guys should cover your, you guys should cover your head. So you're set.
But if you're up to compliance with it, then you're good to go. And, and if they are going to be making a, it's like.
They'll have to do the same.
It's like if you don't do any construction on your house, you don't have to be up to code, but if you're gonna do some construction on your house, you gotta be up to code.
Yeah.
So what I think our question is, is, is this up to code for current building conditions? And the answer is, I think the answer is no, except you're basing that on the fact that none of the stuff upstream is either.
It is if you only have what it's happening now in this stream itself.
So based on the current conditions, because it won't actually bring the water flow down there because.
I think that stream is gonna flood before you hit flood stage on.
And then it'll permeate into the ground.
It'll just go over. If it goes over, it'll just go over the top of the bank and come back in. Or, or what happens is it floods out around it and it'll join back somewhere down here.
So you're saying it doesn't matter, it's a lost cause, just let it.
No, no.
When those storms come.
Yeah, I mean, you can't design for that August storm, that's impossible. That was like a thousand year storm. I'm not gonna design.
What's the regulation?
Hundred year, I think.
A hundred year? A hundred year.
Yeah, I mean, to do that, I'd probably have to either put a double barrel or bigger barrel. And you're talking already seven foot barrels, so you're probably looking at two or three barrels to do that.
Understood.
And that's means, what happens with this section here, this is the narrowest point is on this, is on this property.
Interested to hear your thoughts, Dave.
If, it, it's all about what, what the commission is comfortable with. And, and I'm not saying this to punt, I, I certainly understand your perspective. And I will say selfishly for me, in the event that there is an extreme flood event in the future. Where the upstream or downstream, for that matter, driveway crossings wash out. Cause that happened over on Putnam Park Road, you guys may have seen that. And, and, and these people come back to me and say, hey, Dave, I wanna repair slash replace this. It gives the town better footing to say, well, if you're going to replace it, we recommend you do it to this standard.
Recommend or require?
Is there any liability on this? Is it?
Well, it, 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 it depends.
Well, I'll tell you this, FEMA does not cover storm damage on culverts.
Right.
Only on habitable structures.
So it, it really behooves your homeowner to do this right so that they're not spending tens of thousands of dollars to fix the problem.
But so, so the, the, the issue is, is um the one hundred year. Requirement, that is specifically for storms, okay? Technically, does, does, does this help with, does, does a larger crossing necessarily help with? Um, this property's ability to process more storm water that comes off the property. A- a- and, and the simple answer is, I would say that is no, because, because.
We're by, our drainage system, that's running through here, out of the rain garden down along the driveway. Discharges at a point downstream of the culvert. So we, the only thing this culvert's for is everybody upstream of us.
So could, do you mind if I come around?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just, I just, I think, let me, let me look at the, the situation from this lens. Okay, so we have the rain garden here.
Yeah.
What is this sized for?
Uh, I think it'd be strange um counts, but I says it for um house runoff. And part of this driveway runoff.
But, but, but what?
For what year?
Yes.
It went through various stages, but I think it goes up to at least a twenty five or fifty year storm.
Okay. None of the storm water that's coming off of the house, at least for, for this area, is going down here. That's, that's fair to say, correct?
Well, eventually, yes, because you, it does go out through here. But like I said, it ends up.
But, but that's, but that's only overflow because the rain garden is meant to.
Yeah, there's a pipe, there's an overflow pipe that's about six inches above the bottom grade of the rain guard. So the first six inches of the rain guard gets filled.
Right.
And then after that, the excess flow will go through that pipe and then the rest of it. Discharges into the ground.
Okay, and this section of the driveway is not curved, correct?
No.
Okay, so any water would otherwise sheet flow off the driveway back down to that swale. Okay, okay, so, so if you have a crossing that meets the one hundred year, right? It, it's not doing anything to help what's going on up here, okay? The, the, there are two very isolated, they both deal with water, but they're two very isolated.
Capturing different.
Right.
But they're also both under design.
Well, so, so I, I, I think if you're going to talk about a, a component. You're, you're wanting, they're a component to meet the one hundred year designs standards, it's gonna be there. Okay, and, and that's beyond, where's our, where's our up near the area, where's our hundred year or, uh, yeah, right.
All the green color here.
Right, so, so this is outside of.
Our.
Our purview, your, your guys' purview. I, I, the, the, the one reason why it comes into play is, is if. This doesn't meet the one hundred year, the overflow that does come down here. Okay, so.
Is that a planning and zoning catch?
Well, i- 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 it is, it is, it, it also can be yours because you guys are allowed to. Consider elements that are outside of the one hundred view of the, the one hundred. If there is some kind of direct connection to, you know, uh. To the regulated resources on the property, in which case there is, because you have the overflow that's going here.
Is it traveling down the driveway or under?
It's, it's piped.
Piped through here. And then I, just started right here.
Remember, this is, this is why it, it matters. If, if, if the driveway was curved, which it isn't. So the rainwater off the driveway is just gonna be sheet flow. That's gonna wanna get into the soil as quickly as possible. It's not just gonna run down the driveway, or at least that's something designed in ten.
Well, this, and this driveway is, is graded, so everything's flowing this way.
Right, right, so, but the MO is for the waters not flow down the drivers to get off the driveway, right?
Is the swale um lined with like wetland uptake plants so that they can help slow the water down? It's gonna be a grass mode, like lawn.
I would swear right now it's mostly grass moon. I don't think there's any wetlands planting on it.
It would be good, probably, probably had that be um a, a wetland, uh native wetland plant mix.
No, what if it's, no, how do you know?
Well, well. Okay, well, so are you talking about like a conservation seed mix?
At least that, yeah.
Okay.
I heard uptake plants, but yeah, something to slow and attenuate the water as it goes through that swale. Instead of just having it be a lawn that they're prob- probably applying fertilizer to, I would definitely avoid that.
Okay, well, well, that's, that's a more nuanced.
Yeah.
Detail, we, we, we gotta get to the fundamentals first of.
Right.
You guys want, you guys wanna make sure the storm water is doing what it's supposed to be. How do you think it, what, how, what do you think needs to be changed, if anything, to meet that?
Well, I think that the rain garden needs to be able to handle a hundred year storm.
We can shift the uh. Cause I gave a breakdown of all the storm events I can do like, I don't have it in front of me, I wish I brought.
The drainage report, right?
Yeah.
Can you see what you're using?
I'm looking at the drainage report on the Google Drive for this complication.
I'm on it too when I'm scrolling through, there's a, there's a full drainage report on the Google Drive.
What up?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to speak out of time.
Oh, good, no, it's okay.
It is a lot of pages long, though. So.
There's usually some tables in the appendix A and figures.
All right, can everybody see my?
That's what I'm looking for. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it right on my screen too. I got, uh, I'm just scrolling down to the appendix.
Uh, one hundred year storm event.
You can see the storm events I analyzed, two, five, ten, twenty five, fifty and a hundred.
Yeah, it doesn't work for a hundred years though. It was analyzed, but doesn't fail.
If it failed, I wouldn't tell you about it.
Oh, love your honesty.
I wouldn't submit it, let me put it that way. So there's existing conditions, then here's the proposed conditions of what we're doing. Yes, Simba Brook.
Yep, I got it, yep.
Now, under the figures. Three A and three B are for the proposed. Yes, Simba.
I thought it was Chestnut Brook.
No, that's not the name I saw on the.
Simpa Brook is down by Turkey Plain and Grassy Plains Street.
Yeah, I had that question too.
That, no, that's I saw, it was all called Simpa.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't think this one has a name that I've seen.
No, it's, this is Chestnut Brook.
I think it's not, Simba, it's Chestnut.
I.
Well, I was gonna ask you over to the uh figures.
That's, I'm looking at them.
Yeah, this is me, I'm sorry. I just, I gotta bring this up for myself.
So it was designed for a hundred year.
Where is?
And that was specific to the rain garden?
I believe so, that's why I wanted to look at the figures.
Yeah, but we wanna derail and talk about something. I'm sure in good faith that you've had, we'll, we'll, but yes.
And. All right, well, Todd, Richie didn't call me on it, so he says, no, let's.
He's a detail guy.
I am.
What better are you looking at to find?
Uh, you know what, it's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna derail the conversation for, yeah.
Yeah, the matter.
Not particularly.
And then here's my discussion about the uh. Field observations and what I seen on there, how I did the analysis.
Overflow spillway design, overflow is that a hundred year?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the overflow sp?
That would be the, the outlet of the rain garden.
The level spreader is after down by the brook.
Can you explain what overflow spillway design?
Uh, it's like an emergency spillway, so if you're.
How would that function here? I'm a visual person.
That would function coming down off of this. Like if I look at um.
So in a hundred years, it starts using overflow pipe?
Yeah, sure. Actually, it's gonna use that pipe. It's gonna be in through this point here through all the storms. But if you get past that hundred year, this gotta come down. Sheet this until it hits this structure.
Which is what?
Uh, catch basin number, oh, yard drain number four.
And where does the drain?
That drain now connects down to this system.
The pipe that you have?
Yeah.
So it'll spill over, but the pipe is already full?
It could be, yeah, for a bit. But I just don't really work that way. When you have a pipe that's not full on one side with a culvert and it's not submerged on the other side as, as tail water here. This pipe. Sorry if I draw you a picture.
I like a picture.
Say your culvert looks like this, you're at the head water and you're full, right? You're submerged it. Inside the culvert, the water flow actually looks like that.
Mm-hmm.
The, the edge of the culvert acts as a knife.
Cause it's draining.
Guess, because it can't get physically that much water through the pipe itself. So it's gonna back up a little bit, and that's what this backup is. So there's some people going, like, I don't understand, it's full, it's full here, but I don't see much water coming out this end. Because inside, the fact that which you can't see, it's actually has a different surface flow. That's, that's.
It's just the way physics of water works. Okay, and so then you're saying that she flows over, there's drains that connect to it from above and then the pipe.
Yeah, so I, so in my case, my drain system from this is actually coming out. Below this cold tail water here, so I'm not adding anything to this pipe, to this culvert, from my system. It's only, this is only very, very upstream of me.
Do you mind if I come over there for a moment? Cause I don't, I don't understand.
Okay.
So, the rain garden was designed for a hundred year storm.
It should, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not looking at the report, I'm totally from my memory.
Okay, so what I'm not understanding, help me, is a hundred year storm happens. We have an enormous amount of water in a short amount of time. This is full, this connects to a pipe that runs all along the driveway here, is that correct?
This is the elevator pipe up here, this is the line. Goes in that pipe.
This line right here.
Pipe here goes out, this is the, goes out through this one, through here, here.
And then along that.
Down here, that's the element.
Okay, so what you're saying is that a hundred year storm, this is already, this can handle a twenty five year storm. So this is gonna start to sheet flow across and then there's.
Actually, I can, uh, I can tell you exact elevation on that. It's in the stormwater drainage report.
Okay, I'll put it back on screen.
So if this starts to spread because there's more water than that can handle, you're saying it's going to enter the pipe anyway at later?
It may, or it may just continue down because this is a swale. This edge.
Thank you, Dave, I have that open on my side too. Like, I, I am, I am following along on the exact same document on the Google Drive, just so you know. Like, I know you guys are discussing a lot there, I'm following and reading.
Did you know what is, what this space looks like when it's, when it's not? Oh, when it's been developed, is that just lawn? What is that?
Did you see stuff for the rain garden there? Can you find?
I'm going to append it.
I believe it's gonna just be lawn. I don't, I mean, it necessarily included a planting plan with that, right? Have a look at the entire package again.
Okay.
There is a planting plan.
Okay, so we can.
I saw a planting plan, but it may be for the old, you know.
All right, here's, here's figure four for the rain garden. Yep. Is this, is this the page that you're looking for, Scott, or?
I was looking for under.
Yeah, sure.
What page are you on, Dave? Sorry, I just closed it and reopened it, so I lost my spot.
Oh dear, okay, sorry, here I am. Uh, I am at.
He's in appendix A right now.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it.
Their rain garden, what's this?
Yep, hundred apologies.
So under the hundred year storm, you're going from a pre-development of two point eight. And then going through the rain garden, which is hydrograph number three, pound routing, routing through, that's the rain garden. And for the hundred year storm, you're being reduced down to one point two. So you go from two point eight to one point two. So actually, there shouldn't be no overtopping of that bank on that berm.
Yes, that meant.
Yeah.
I remember that's what you just said.
You've got, you've got huge, um, almost more than fifty percent decrease and then runoff.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like fifty six percent.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
No. But I believe under the planting plan, it's either gonna be some trees or bushes or mostly lawns. But I have to go back and review that. If you guys want to.
I just was curious as to whether it was gonna be permeable or impermeable, or what, what you guys were gonna be doing. We had like mulched gardens there, what's going on?
Don't know if days into that. If the plants into that kind of thing, maybe it's like.
There was only a planting plan outlined for around the culvert, it looks like.
Usually you do a planting plan for the rain garden itself.
I didn't see that.
That's in the detail sheets.
Is it? I don't see it, where is it?
I believe so.
Can you find that too?
It's a typical rain garden mix of plants and grasses and stuff, what that's typical recommend.
Native plantings?
Yeah.
Uh, you're going to go to sheet C dash seven A, I'll bring it up on the screen.
Mulch layer, planting soil layer, it's the side, the cross section.
It's a cross section.
There's a cross section and down.
Page, alright, page ten, got it.
So, so this is the overhead view right here, the one that looks like a dissected kidney bean.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know what that was.
And then, and then the one that's above, that's your cross section.
And there's a little pipe that you would be overflowing to that.
Yeah.
So basically, and then the pipe down below is that uh. Twelve inch under drag, so once it starts filling up. We buy, we were always given an emergency outlet, that's the emergency outlet. Cause I don't want my rain garden washed away. And anything that's sitting there, that's below the six inches, is gonna soak into that mix before it goes into the native soils.
And, and why would you choose something called smeez weed?
That's one of those plants they have in the DEP book.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, you're.
I know, it's, it's still gonna make it weird why they choose it.
I will, I will say there are lots of other plants on this list.
As long as it's compatible, I mean, if anyone wants to come back in. And it can just come back in as a administrative review if you want to change it, right?
Can that same mix be used for like the swale that gets re, you know, dug up and replanted?
So, well, this, this isn't a mix, this isn't a mix, this is, these are specific plantings.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a mix.
A number of plants, I see.
Yeah, if, if, n- none, none of these plants are, um. Oh, there's a word.
Invasive?
No, no, there's, there's a word that describes how a plant persists, like some plants. That's exactly right. Exactly right. So I don't wanna say how many of these plants are woody or herbaceous, I can tell you. You know, some of them look like they're herbaceous, where you mow over them, you know, it's not gonna kill the plant per se, but it's, it's gonna have to regrow. Okay, for, for a conservation seed mix, every single plant in that is herbaceous.
These are, these are all herbaceous growing plants.
Okay.
Yeah, we usually don't recommend allowing to let any kind of tree saplings grow inside on this rain garden, and we recommend you just remove that immediately. Well, I don't wanna take enough the root space on that. And I don't want it growing on the sides of it either, because if it falls over and rips up the uh, the bank.
Um, but maybe a similar, the similar plants would be good in that, in that swale.
Right.
On the swale, if you really wanna go through that path, you should look at stresses on that swale. Most plant stresses can only handle about pound per square foot.
A flow, you're talking about water flow?
Right, so if you get heavier than that. Or, and that flow is, is dependent on how steep that swale is. Plus you've got.
Yeah.
From the neighbor's yard as well. So if you wanna go through and put some. Plantings there, one is gonna have enough contact time to do an uptake of nutrients.
Yeah.
It's also gonna be strong enough to resist the forces coming down that swale. We can look at that and generate a. Analysis for that swell, see what kind of stresses it's undergoing.
How can it be designed to look optimally slow the water?
Yeah, I gotta fix slope. So I gotta look at, okay, what's the best material to put down to resist shearing forces? Basically, uh, preventing the water from ripping up that swale and carrying material back down to the brook.
What is it, is it a rip, is it a rip rap, is it large stone?
No, I don't think it is. I don't recall it being large, we can go definitely.
What do you think would be best for slowing the water?
If he's under, if the water is under five feet per second, for velocity, you'd probably get away with. Uh, vegetation.
I see what you're saying.
But it goes past that, then you're.
It'll over the roots and all that stuff.
It'll, it'll just take the plants down, and anything loose, it'll basically self armor. That's where you, that's a stream that's only has stone left, all the light stuff is from carried away downstream.
So is that what it should be designed?
Well, you could, yeah, there should be considered that. From this point through here, that's my slope, how much water is coming down into it? How fast is it going, and how much stress am I under?
Right.
If I'm under one pound per foot, per square foot, I can do vegetation, that's the limit on vegetation. And that's only the first couple inches of a foot, after that, it's not the same.
Could we have our engineer look at that, or try to answer this question of the shearing forces on the swale, like with the, the, the. Carrying capacity and the slope.
I didn't do that last time, only cause I don't think we're, this was an alternate plant, so we got that part of that.
Well, why, why don't we figure out what that is first? Okay, let me, let me go out there and, and take a look at it, see if it is actually something that's.
Can we do a sidewalk, or can we say?
Do, do you guys wanna have, you guys didn't express interest in having one at the last meeting, if you guys wanna have one between now and March twenty-fourth. It's up to you.
Between now and when?
March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-eight.
It is March twenty.
Thank you.
Would the owner mind if I just like, take a look at it one day from the road? I guess that's.
You're going anywhere from.
Cause you can see the roads right there, right?
Yeah, I, wha- what I would say is, again, if, if, if you're gonna make options, if, if any of you are going to approach the property individually. Let me know when you're going, so I can arrange, or just give an FYI to Mr. Ortiz. To let him know that you guys are gonna be there, instead of him thinking there's some random person trespassing on his property. Okay, if, if you guys are going to go there for your own observations, if you take, if you, um. If you wanna have those be part of your discussion, if you wanna use that knowledge as part of your discussion, just take a couple photographs. So that way, everybody else has the benefit of what you see, in case everybody else can't make it out there. That's, that's one of the things I would, I would offer, if you guys don't wanna have a sidewalk, but you guys do wanna check it out.
Can I go with you? I just wanna go on your go.
Yeah, I don't see why not, if, if, uh.
You need me or Mr. Ortiz on the site as well?
No, I would, i- if, if, if you're there, that's great, if you're not, it's no loss.
Oh, that was.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Come on, I'm, I'm sorry, I did not mean that, that to come out as far as.
Uh huh.
I, I'd be glad, I'd be appreciative to accompany you if you.
You know, if you feel we, our employee is needed or required. Or would be welcome, but if you don't feel that way, I'm not gonna.
Why, why, why don't we double back on this later on this week? Just cause I have P and Z tomorrow night, um, so can I, can I put a tag in? For me to put a call in or an email to you later this week, so that we can coordinate a date, and if for some reason they don't work. Then, you know, it is what it is, but you guys are otherwise, if you, if you wanna be there, then you certainly, yeah.
Yeah, just give me an email, we can coordinate with you.
Okay. You guys have anything else for tonight?
Yeah, I, I'm still, despite wonderful attempts to help me understand. I'm still not really clear on the flow of the water along the road. And why having an upgraded culvert isn't beneficial. So, I, I understand, I think I understand, what you're saying is that the current amount, the current volume. That the culvert's upstream can handle is insufficient for a hundred year storm. And so the water will overflow the banks around the culvert anyway, because it's creating a bottleneck. And, and then are you saying that you think it's gonna infiltrate into the soils around? I don't either, okay, so then we're on the same page. So then it's just gonna continue, it's gonna be a, a river that, a river, a river, a, a water course that overflow. Thanks, and continues to create habit downstream as it flows. So I still, this is the piece that my brain has not quite absorbed yet.
I know.
It's not infiltrated.
It's, it's counterintuitive sometimes.
Yep, and this is not my area of expertise.
That's okay.
So, here's the massive volume of water that we saw over the summer, right? Coming down, and it reaches this point that we're right, that we're looking at here on this application.
Nope.
Nope.
Higher.
That one.
Yep.
If there's a larger culvert system there of culverts.
Yeah.
Why does everything not just go through it properly then?
Because from this point.
Yep.
Upstream, that's gonna break out. Go, some of it may go down here, but a lot of it's gonna bypass around it. Otherwise, it's, it's gonna flood out through the yard and into the road. I suspect the road, being as steep as it is, is gonna act as the fastest route for any stormwater coming down.
Okay, are you, okay, are you in agreement with me that if I had a magic wand, which actually, actually do have several of those in my office? Um, I can bring some in. That if, if I pulled out all the upstream culverts.
Have you designed all of them to be a hundred year storm?
Yeah, it would function properly.
Everything would function better, but I don't know if the channel itself would do too much.
So let, my question is.
So, if, if all the culverts were large enough to handle that volume. We're still gonna have an issue with the water in the channel itself when it's not in a culvert?
I think so, because looking at the shape, size. And slope of that existing channel from, it all comes out of a sto- of a pond up here.
I remember that, yep.
And that guy didn't want me to see it, cause he kicked me off the property. Very aggressive against anybody in the town. That channel. Would only handle about the one year storm from my analysis.
The.
As is.
The stream bed?
Yes.
Or whatever it would be called?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you put in bigger.
Uh huh.
Pipes, it doesn't help you with the stream bed itself.
Right, so we would have to like create like the LA.
You almost have to read, you almost have to read, analyze the channel.
Well, mother nature might do that.
Yeah, you could, it could rip it up. I saw the, the ones in Pomperon, um. Over in Zalberg, they ripped out huge chunks of culverts, all gone, like thirty or forty feet down. And about fifty feet across, just scooped out.
Yep.
I've seen like under designed culverts, uh, you know, from this last storm, that, and you could see how high the, where the water level came up to. And you could tell that it was just trying to jam through this like too small opening.
Yep.
To get to where it needed to go, and it caused massive flooding in the whole like downtown area around Caroloozies. And like.
How did it?
Well.
Was that the wrong one?
Yeah.
All, all, well, not, large swaths of downtown were completely flooded here, there's a lot of damage in this area, I don't know where you're at.
But this.
We had a lot.
Yeah, yeah, you did, you guys got hit really bad, right?
And what is this, seventy-one by like forty, just forty-one across or something like that? It was like, it's wider, it's wider than it is tall.
No, no, I'm good.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, Dave, I just, I'm wondering whether it would be okay to.
Yeah, seventy-one inches wide, forty-seven inches high, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie, weigh in on this conversation?
Well, he, he, I mean, he already did, for all intents and purposes, from when, when the commission last reviewed this. Cause a lot of.
But that was before this storm event, and before the regulations were changed to hundred year storms.
So, here is my question.
I haven't heard from him since.
My question is, the regulation is a hundred year storm.
Right.
Why would we vary from that?
Be- because this culvert isn't, isn't necessar- isn't a direct component of the stormwater system. It's different from it.
For the, for the project.
Because it doesn't have to do with the construction that's happening at the house?
Sure it does, you gotta.
No, I'm asking if that's what Dave is saying.
Right, right.
This aspect of this.
No, if, 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 if you want him to do that, then I'm certainly not gonna dismiss your request, I'm, I'm just saying. The, the reason why. This was not as important an element in the stormwater management review, because, is because. The stormwater is meant to be handled by the rain garden, okay?
Right, I understand that.
A- a- and if it would be, you would be having an entirely different conversation if there wasn't one there.
I don't think entirely, I think I would have an additional conversation, the rain garden, I had no concerns, it's designed for a hundred year, I'd like to know. Why we would not go by the requirement on the hundred year storm.
It's for stormwater management systems.
Okay.
Okay, the, how, how, how does, how does the crossing of a driveway manage a storm system?
Because if it rains, the water's coming down through the brook, you're crossing this waterway.
Right, right.
Why, why can't you just put a one year storm culvert in there? You know, I, I, yeah, I'm looking for a reason why. We would deviate from that, just every other permit we have coming through us now, we're looking at the guidance for a hundred year storm, and everything. This, why?
Right.
Why would we not require that when the water is going through, I don't care. It, it's on the property, it's in the upland review area, why wouldn't we require that?
But, but that, but that water is going through that culvert regardless of whether there's a storm or not.
No, I know, again, but. If it was designed, we would do it designed for a hundred year storm.
And.
Yeah, no, please.
Let's say I put one in for, and that's just a hundred year storm.
Thank you, okay.
And let's say, I give you an analysis of everything that's going into it. And I give you a picture, which I can do, of how far it will flood out. On the, all the subsequent culverts above us, up, upstream of us.
Right.
If you saw that picture, and you're saying, okay, I'm putting a hundred year culvert in, but I'm not getting all the water in.
I, I think, I think our concern is, is that we don't know what the future holds. Not just in terms of, um, increasing storm intensity, but also in terms of what might happen with those culverts upstream.
Yeah.
And then it would be foolish.
Exactly.
It might be foolish, well, this is my feeling, to not upgrade this, to accept that flow. If other ones might be upgraded in the future, that's my thought process, now I may be off, but that's where I'm at.
I'm in the same boat, I, I, and I'm.
I did my analysis on this as based on a working rating curve, and what I already had in the field. And said, okay, these in the field can only handle so much.
Right.
So what?
Uh, you know, I totally understand that, we're just looking at.
And when me and Tom had talked about that four years ago, five years ago, that argument seemed to be valid.
Sure.
Now, if Todd wants to come back to me and say. I gotta look at it for a hundred year, we'll work with him on that.
Yeah.
I, I would like our engineer, our engineer will look at it, our engineer says, you're nuts with a hundred year storm, I'm, I get, I'm in a fence on this, it's like. I look at it like, okay. Would I, would I take the. Uh, let me, we're on Reservoir Street, would I change Reservoir Street into? Four lanes at each side, no, because you can't get enough cars in there, but when you're designing like developments like down south, they get like roads with. Three lanes at each side, because you know it's gonna eventually have to hold that, and things will be changed down the road.
But, but you're, but you're not. But you're not changing the, the flow of what's coming down Chestnut Brook. Storms, storm, freak storm events notwithstanding, okay, you, you, you're not increasing the volume. There, there isn't anything that would otherwise increase the flow upstream.
I disagree with that, because when you're designing to a hundred year storm, a hundred year storm, in my opinion, is a freak storm. So you are increasing the flow in that channel for a hundred year. So you are increasing the flow in that channel for a hundred year storm. I mean, if our design was twenty-five year storm, I'd be like, you're all set. What's the design is a hundred year storm now. So, and I understand upstream, you got so much blockage, you can't get that all into there.
Yeah.
But what if, I'll tell you right now, your neighbor comes now and say, hey, I wanna, you know, change my driveway. I wanna do this. He's gonna be like, I'm not doing a hundred year, and you don't have a hundred year here. Well, you know, it's like you catch twenty-two. I I.
Where does it start?
Where does it start? Where does it end? And are you like? If our engineer says you're, it's obscene to put a hundred year culvert in there because. You'll never get the flow. I'm good, okay? I would just like like him to, I I'm so much in offense on it. It's like, I don't wanna overkill it. But I, I, that's what the regulations are. I need someone to tell me, you don't need to follow the regulations on this one to be able to do.
I would like that, of course.
Um, the um, what if it does fail and and there's gonna be a homeowner, right? Who who buys this property? And if it does, if it fails because it was not subject to the twenty-five year storm, not the hundred year storm. Thing fails, it gets washed away, they have to repair it. Are they gonna be like, why didn't you guys tell them to design it to a hundred year storm? I would. Come to the town and be like, what, like?
And if there's a hundred and ten year storm and it washes, it'd be like, why didn't you design it to a hundred twenty-five?
But I don't know, did you understand my question?
I I I do, I do. I I I would not, not to um insult the average homeowner. But if if they didn't look at a pipe that was nearly six foot wide. And almost four foot tall and think that was undersized for any reason. Then that they 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 would have to be to to your caliber or or perhaps to to an engineer to to. To even have that question.
Or they'll just see how fluid the water comes up and they'll know that it wasn't designed properly because it breached it on.
Well, right, but.
They'll be like, uh.
Right, but.
You guys didn't build this properly?
I I I just like the engineer to use the common sense approach and tell me. If 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 you guys, if you guys want this to go out for engineering review, I'm not gonna dismiss that. You know, if if that's what, if that's what you're asking for, staff didn't think that that was necessary. But if if you guys feel that strongly, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to dissuade you. I I would even say you gotta go out for engineer review or goes to a hundred year.
I would just like to invite him to come to the next meeting so that he can weigh in and we can get, or or to provide comments or whatever would be appropriate.
Okay.
I I've been listening to all this and I'm actually, my sentiments uh directly, and I've been looking over the. Reports in the water flow and the watershed reports and I I'm kind of just right along with Pat, like. I'm not negating anything that's being said and in fact, it all makes complete logical sense. So I'm gonna have a hard time like. Arguing the point of view of what was proposed, but if we have an opportunity or an option to. To have our engineer just weigh in and, you know, give me peace of mind, you know. Tuck me in a little bit so I feel better about my decision. I'd like to take that opportunity, but but. Other words, I can't, I can't argue the logical standpoints of everything that was brought forward today, so.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement on that. Thank you for offering that, Dave. In the interest of time, I would like to see if we can close this part of the conversation. Is everybody weighed in what they feel was important for this moment?
Yes.
Great.
No, yeah, no. No, I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say I'm I'm good to go. Everything was fulfilled very, very well, actually.
And we will continue to be discussing this at our next meeting. So were there any other relevant questions that we wanted to bring before the engineer tonight?
No.
No, no, I I did more than he had to, to be honest. It was uh well put together.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Do we need a motion to continue the discussion to our next regular meeting on March twenty eighth?
Uh, you. Well, you should have, well, you have up to fifty-five days.
Yes.
You haven't exhausted that here in this case yet. I mean, it it seems, do you wanna, you wanna pull for a general consensus?
Sure, do we feel like we would like to?
Yes.
Yes, Kevin?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I raised, I raised my hand. I raised, I raised a hand you can't see. Oh, my video's off still. I'm sitting in the same place doing the same thing.
The commission wants staff to have a gen- uh to have a draft resolution available on this at the next meeting.
Um, are we leaning in favor of approval or denial? Is that what we're asking here? Yes.
Is it, is it too soon to ask that question? No, 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 I, I have no problem with approval. I'm leaning towards approval. With that one, the, like, what's the size of that culvert? Once we have the size of the culvert, then I'm okay with approval.
Okay.
Yes. And engine related issues aside. I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine, engineering related issues that we will discuss in our next meeting, isn't it?
My two concerns with the culvert and the 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 swell that's collecting the stormwater down the driveway on the property and if that can be slowed. Or what kind of plants can go in there to best order, plants order, material, what's gonna be made of, cause the best infiltrate and slow the water.
Do you feel like?
And I think that's a question for the engineer too, because is it big enough to hold? You said there's, you were the one who started the conversation, I think, that said there was no information about it.
Well, I, well, I, I, that was more for just a wetlands perspective. It wasn't necessarily for an engineering perspective. I wasn't thinking about the the volume of water that was going in there so much as I was thinking whether or not that's. Something that's wetlands related to begin with.
You only reason asked because we have to redesign it, rebuild it. So maybe we should make sure that the design can carry the, you know, proper water properly.
Yeah, if 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 that is something that is within Mr. Ritchie's purview, I would definitely have him consider it, of course.
So question on the table right now is, are you, are you leaning toward wanting Dave to have um a draft of approval available for our next meeting? We don't necessarily have to utilize it, but we'd like him to put in the work to have that available to us. Do you think you'll have enough information at the end of our?
Once these questions are answered.
Which are gonna be, do you think at our next meeting you will have ample time to get those questions answered and and render a vote on approval on this?
Yeah, as long as.
If you get answers that are, that meet your expectations for approval, are you leaning towards approval?
Oh, yeah, that would be good.
Kevin, same questions to you. Did you hear?
Yes, oh, I thought, I thought I replied. I apologize. Yes, I'm definitely leaning towards yes, um, after. The uh the approach with engineer. So I I I more or less mirror you and Dave, uh Pat's standpoint.
Okay, sure, if you wouldn't mind creating a draft of approval course for our next meeting so that if we get our questions answered, we can move forward. That would be great. Thanks, Dave.
Sure, it'll be done.
Okay, great. So then do I need a motion to continue this for our next meeting or that just?
You just, you just, you have a consensus.
Okay, uh, so we can just move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you so much for all of the valuable information tonight as to meeting, Mr. Wettman.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so moving along to old business.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, we have old business, one of them come to you's road. Yeah, I know.
Punt, so I skip whatever the source word you wanna use, very sorry.
Moving along to new business, then we have um our regular meeting minute from the twenty fifth and the tenth, starting with. February twenty fourth. How many of you were?
Approved the uh minutes as written for February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
You're second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moves.
All four of you were here at the last meeting.
I was, that's, you know.
Yes, yes.
Able, aren't you?
Every one of them.
And then for three tens.
That was the sidewalk.
Yes, yes.
We were all there.
You, yes, we were all there. So I would entertain a motion to approve this special meeting minutes as written for three ten.
Motion made.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Oh, Kevin?
Aye.
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 Okay, so motion passes. We are now at staff report.
Okay, um, let me get my stuff in for together, so I know what we gotta do. Yes, okay, cool. Um, Mercury Water Company, they have a environmental champion award nominations every year. Uh, there's a little pamphlet. If you guys wanna go through with nominating somebody, there's a deadline. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. It's like, you know, I wanna keep this really in the interest of time. So if you wanna look at that and get back to me on that for the next meeting, that would be cool. Uh, I issued an administrative agent approval for people to remove a beaver dam at Greenwood Village. They went swimmingly, no pun intended, and I imagine.
Very funny.
Or of those things. Uh, I imagine you guys may have more of those, cause that's not the only beaver dam that's alone that section of Simpah Brook. I don't wanna get too much into specifics on those right now, but you'll get the info as it comes. Now, for the other two items that I didn't have on the agenda.
Did you also wanna mention that Mr. Implosy remains vacant?
It does.
I would say fabulous, but it is not fabulous.
No, so, anyway.
I just wanted it on the record.
Thank you.
Yep.
Devon Rockwell Road, Bjorg and Mark versus in the weather's commission of the town of Bethel DVD dash CB twenty-four dash six zero five zero five eight four dash S. District, district of Danbury. Chuck Andrews, town council or land use council. He attended a status conference with Neil Marcus, the uh applicant's attorney council. And Judge Maximo Medina Junior, if I'm getting his name correctly, and this was back on March tenth. Uh, he had, he also had an executive session beforehand with Attorney Marcus, which was very productive. Uh, Attorney Marcus agrees to his clients filing an application for regulated activities. With the documentation and the testimony from an expert, as this commission had previously requested. As to how soon that's gonna come in, I have no idea. But that's what Neil Marcus said he had agreed to. Um, Attorney Andrews said that he and Attorney Marcus will have another status conference with. Um, Judge Medina in July. Hopefully, you guys will have something before you, before that date. If not, then they'll have to figure out where that goes. Um, this doesn't require an executive session just because there's nothing in here that's confidential per se. If for some reason anything changes, I will let you guys know and then we both have Attorney Andrews come back and we go through what we did the last meeting.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Yep.
Um, are you periodically or is someone periodically making sure that work has ceased on that?
If it's not me, then Mr. Blanchett.
Yeah, fair enough. So the answer is yes, same monitor. Thank you. That's my only question.
Um, the other thing I have that's not on here. And the other, other thing that isn't as important, but I still, it's worth noting to you guys, I got a. Uh, project for uh the pesticide general product from DDP from, well, from. The Panda Light Connection, I believe is their group, but uh it's just a notice for me. Uh, that uh that group is gonna do work at this property. They were last stopped here in September. It's current routine. And if you guys have any questions, let me know. The other thing that's way more interesting, no offense to DDP. Or seventy-seven other part of the road, is a presentation by Frank Clear. Their Land Use Academy is having a presentation for. The science and regulations of wetlands in Connecticut on May seventeenth. There's a fee for attend. You don't have to attend in person if you aren't able to, but the sooner you guys let me know. What's uh what you'd like to do, um, the better, just so we can get those monies paid. This is uh, what's on there is a free absence on the people that will be attending. I'm not gonna discourage you guys from going. I think it would be very beneficial to all of you. If you have any questions, I'm here to ask.
Can you send that invite and information via email uh as well for this meeting?
I was, I was going to plan, uh, I was planning to forward that to you guys tomorrow. I just got this.
Perfect. Okay, no, awesome, awesome. Just as long as I have it in the record so I could check it against my schedule, that's all.
Most definitely. Any question, any other questions for me?
Uh, I have one, but it's not related to wetlands. So we could do that after we close real quick if you want.
Good. African and European swallower.
Excellent answer. Alright, moving along, we have uh commission comments in the wetlands regulations review and discuss. Do you want to have more discussion around lighting or anything else tonight?
Yeah, I think we pretty much had it. But it sounds to me, or maybe I'm asking the commission. If the best thing to do is to just make it easy for the applicants, not necessarily. You know, for us and the applicants in these discussions that we have. To just say, tell us, my name is Wetlands involved, when, do you see the thing? What, what there are, what, what the lighting, um. You know, I mean.
Would be around the wetland.
Yeah. I don't know how.
I I know, I would say at the time in which we have something that comes across our desk that we have to choose as to whether or not we're going to accept the application. We will also determine at that request if we want. Um, lighting based information. I can't remember the exact name of the reports, but that would be the time to request it. But we would make that decision at the time we're deciding to accept or not, which is reasonable.
Could you have any idea what the cost is on adding one of those for an applicant?
I, no, I, the, the simple answer is no. I, I, it, it, it's site specific because some properties, it could be very small. Some properties, it could be very big, and then conversely, if you're doing a lot of activity, i.e. making a massive parking lot. Or if you're just doing a very small access way, you know.
Exactly, yes. It 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 should be specific to each individual uh to your experience.
So I would say that one of the things that I would recommend that we consider is, do we really need that for every application or do we want?
No.
Some sort of an appropriate radius. So for example, as Pat was bringing up in our conversations. We looked at other applications where the lighting was going to be twenty-five feet away from a wetland. Versus this application where it was a hundred and twenty-five feet away. So those being different animals completely.
I say we leave it to our, uh, we should just leave it to the board's discretion because I think that every single. Application that comes to force is gonna have individ- individualized issues and and to create like a standard of practice might not be beneficial to us. I think that it would be best to use our judgment to make that decision, but make sure that we make that decision as part of our request. Not after the fact, which we've done twice.
Think we have a checklist when an application gets in our.
Yes, it is, but the photometric chance not in it.
Can we add photo?
Of course, I can get.
Add it to the checklist, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Do we, so maybe we do wanna do that and maybe we don't. That's why I was asking and Dave was unable to answer that because it's more complex than the, than a simple numerical answer. If we include that, if we ask people to include that, then we're adding a financial burden to every application.
So you miss something when I'm saying, I like to check this of everything. Possibly request, and then we, we, we accept an application, go photo checklist, nah, really don't need it for this one, blah, 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 okay. In order for, we would request it right at the beginning. Yeah, for, for every application, there's a checklist that's provided. Right, yes, if add that to the checklist so that, not that we're requiring every application to get it. But there's so many things that we, you may forget all about it and, you know. One from that, unless you have a checklist, oh, photo, yes, I like to see that for this one.
I understand what you're saying, Pat. I totally agree. We do that every job I've ever had. You, you just want a listing of documentation that could be possibly requested for anything that comes across your desk. And if it pertains to that particular item, we check it off.
Let, let me double check that that fix is as simple as it sounds. If it's not, then I'll let you, then I'll let you know what you guys have to do. Although I just have to memorize it, because I don't wanna require that everyone, some of them.
Sure.
There's.
I'm not gonna.
Be like, the ones that's right there, so yeah.
Is it, is it something that is super, I guess so, because it could be really cost prohibitive, but. Basically, like, I wanna see for, I do wanna see for every application that the light's not going to be anywhere near the well.
Right, but, but, but that's.
The degrade and goes, goes less and less as it's in the up interview area as it approaches the well. And that it's saved localized through the surfaces to the rare that light is needed for safety reasons on the driveways, the walkways.
I wouldn't say inevitably, if you wanna do it that way, then do it, my suggestion would be any application where there is a physical. Building within a certain radius of the wetland. I don't wanna see for every application because. If you're two hundred feet away, three hundred feet away, you don't need it.
Well, if there's a valley between the house and the wetlands, you're not gonna need it.
Right, but why, why even request everyone that?
That's why it's better to make that request at the time. Yeah, I don't think that we should create it as a standardized request.
Okay, if you think that's gonna be accepted to the applicants and engineers, are they gonna balk and be like, no, we don't have to do that.
But that's part of our job.
Your pushback comes in the middle of review.
Right.
Your pushback doesn't come at the beginning, okay? It, 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 it's, it's all about being upfront with what your requests are. If, if, if you change them mid-review.
What are they gonna say? Like Doug said, it's like, I never.
No, no, that, that's okay, but this is, this is where I, I harped on not to bring up that process again, but this hypothetical, right, hypothetical. Whenever you guys accept an application, this is why it's important to go through everything, okay? The site plans, supplemental materials, the application itself, so that way you guys get a general idea for what's going on. And, and, and yes, so some of that comes with experience, right? Like you have Jennifer's Way in your cap. You have Jennifer's Way in your cap, you have. Uh, this address forty-seven Star Lane in your cap for any properties going forward. Where the circumstances are similar. You can refer back to this if you don't already have something that explicitly says that this needs to be done and ask. Why it wasn't done. And then the applicant, you would have an app, a dialogue with the applicant then. As to whether or not it's appropriate to have that. And if you feel so strongly, then yeah, it it's it's.
Keep asking the same question.
It's their responsibility. To give you the information that you need to render a decision, but you have you have to be fair to ask.
And we also have to make sure. Like Jennifer. He brought up Jennifer Way. We were okay with that statement in Jennifer Way. If we're asking for this, you know, on every other application, every fifth, whatever. You can't say on one application, oh, I want zero light here, and the next application twenty-five percent here. You need to have a. Justifiable amount, rational, set amount. You can't be like, no, today I feel like zero, tomorrow I feel like twenty-five. And it has to be based on science that where does it start affecting the weather?
This is, this is again where you would have an expert weigh in.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Then you need. If you're gonna request this, we also need to request having some expert tell us at which point. Is like negative. And he may say zero.
I think it would be zero, but yeah, we should do that if you guys, and especially if you guys need it. Plus, I can find that other documentation from the previous. I think it was, it was probably, you know what it was? It was Whitney Road.
Yeah.
It was Whitney Road.
Well.
And I provided all this, this scientific documentation.
Sure, sure. And 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 no one's going to refute. The language of a of a generalized text. It's all about. Substantial evidence and how. How relatable it is to the circumstances for a a a lot. If if someone. Says that that is an expert that says. I have this information and based on. The existing conditions and what is being proposed, X is going to cause Y. Then then yeah, that then then that is something that you can say it is is substantial evidence because someone's in front that there's a a likelihood for something to occur. But if if you're just relying on someone saying, oh, light pollution is just is bad in general, just just to be general, then it's 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 not enough. Because you're not speaking to what is specifically going on that property, and you're not correlating that. That generalized knowledge to how that is a specific direct adverse impact. To that property. It 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 all, it all, you you have to be able to.
Is already known to be an issue.
Right, right.
Generally, so to to.
Right.
But you can't use, the way you say you can't use that as a general thing, you need a specific.
It it has to be specific.
Gladly, um, yeah.
Now, I'm gonna say.
Basically, any light leaving a site should be. Should not be allowed. Like, it shouldn't be maintained by the building.
By who saying that, though?
There's one of the regulations already said.
Serving its locality where it's intended to be, it should consider.
But I'm playing devil's advocate here. Who's saying that? And how do you know that's gonna gonna affect the wetlands?
Because I know that.
Because you know, you're not the next.
Yeah, and and that's a, and you know the generalities of it. You have to have direct impact on exactly the application that's in front of you, specifically to the application that's in front of you, but that's what the professional will get for it. So just back to like, we're running in circles here. Back back to the beginning, it's like. If we make the decision that we want to have the analytics done and a professional come in on any particular application, we just ask for it. And I think that's reasonable to do, um. I i if we feel like there'll be an impact on the property. So it kind of like reverts right back to that very beginning stage. So.
You said it, you said it more simply.
Good.
Great, uh, Beth. Can we recognize Beth? Fairly recognized, Beth.
Your hands raised, Beth?
I just wanna, I just wanna echo what Kevin just said. You know, the staff and the commission have discretion at the acceptance of an application. Look at it when you accept an app. If you want a photometric study or something of that nature, state it at that time, and if all of you agree, it goes forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
All right, um, have we beat that horse enough tonight?
I'm running out of stuff to hit it with.
Okay, you good, Nico?
Yeah, I'll bring up my reasoning again because I don't know.
Okay, sound good. Okay, uh, so can I would like to, are there any more regulation discussion that we would like to engage in tonight, or can we close that out? Is enough for tonight, Kevin? You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
That?
I'm good.
Okay, cool. Then I would open up the floor for public comments. I see no public here. Yes, go ahead.
They can still raise.
I wouldn't like.
Beth's. Yep.
I wouldn't like hearing more from Beth about.
I don't know how to do this. I apologize. I'm always in the room and not outside of the room. I have nothing more to add. Sorry, dude.
Oh, okay, I'll lower your hand.
Oh, no worries.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom, Amanda? No. Okay, I I just can't see all of the names. I see there's five people, but I don't remember who they are. Okay, so hearing no public comments, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at. I can't. Nine thirty-nine P M.
Okay. Give us a second.
No, move.
Move.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. I will call a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.